In roll call, please.
Trustee Buena, absent. Trustee Henderson?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez. Trustee Hoffman. Trustee Ino. Absent. Trustee Vela.
Here.
Trustee Veras. Student Trustee Cordova.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you all so much. Um, let's go if, uh, you could lead us on the, uh, flex salute student trustee. Thank you all so much. I did want to, uh, before we move on, um, take a moment of silence for all of the casualties, um, that have been lost in the Middle East. Let's just take a moment of silence. Thank you so much. Um, again, with heavy heart, um, I would like to adjourn, uh, today's meeting in memory of both, um, Cindy Montañez, um, friend of, of L A C C D as well as Gabriela Buena. Um, again, um, champion, uh, of L A C C D. I'll go ahead and, uh, read some, um, attributes to both. Um, Ms. Cindy Montañez served in elected leadership roles in California, including as the youngest San Fernando City Council member at the age of twenty-five, and the youngest women elected to the California State Assembly at age twenty-eight. Ms. Montañez died on October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three after a long battle with cancer. She was forty-nine years old. Her background as an activist had its roots at UCLA, where in nineteen ninety-three, Ms. Montañez, um, was among five students who went on a fourteen-day hunger strike that helped establish a Chicano Studies Department. Dedicated to improving the environment, Ms. Montañez worked for the L A Department of Water and Power, where she played a crucial role in pushing the Department of Water and Power to use cleaner energy and create a better water capture method. In twenty-sixteen, she became the CEO of Tree People, which made her one of the few Latinas in charge of a large U S-based environmental nonprofit. Working for environmental justice, Ms. Montañez focused on encouraging politicians and wealthy funders to care about E J, environmental justice in the inner cities and creating more parks and open spaces. Last year, she convinced the Assembly to pass a one hundred and fifty million dollar bill to help schools combat climate change. The more trees shade structures and gardens. Ms. Cindy Montañez is survived by her parents and five siblings. At this time, would any board members like to come? Just please.
Thank you, trustee, for those words. Um, uh, Cindy was, uh, a friend and a colleague, uh, of mine. We were classmates and I first, um, met her, her, her second year at UCLA in my first and, um, I distinct pleasure of, of visiting the campus as a high school senior, uh, because of all the great energy that took place in the hunger strike and she was there with her, her sister on the fast and it was a tribute to Cesar Chavez. It was a nonviolent, um, effort to talk about social change and improvement for students and and the legacy of, of those students and all the work they did, um, is the Cesar Chavez Center that we see today on that campus. You know, I also had the distinct pleasure of, of working for her as a, as, uh, in her office in the Assembly and, uh, uh, a four-year effort that, um, she was never afraid to engage. She was always, uh, pro-immigrant, uh, pro-working person. And, uh, at the time was the youngest, uh, woman ever to serve in the legislature and, and did it without fear, without reservation, and with a lot of energy and, um, uh, for having, uh, a four-year window there, the Assembly and, and certainly her term in the San Fernando Council. She stuck to her convictions and did it, uh, work with an organization in Tree People. And I, and if you want to highlight this, because Tree People is, uh, is housed up in the, uh, San Monica Mountains in Beverly Hills. And it was an organization that I think did a great work there in Beverly Hills, but a place where, um, people's backyards were parks. Um, and, uh, her efforts there took Tree People from there into places like Huntington Park and, uh, and Coima and San Fernando, where the tree planting efforts really extended and it became, um, uh, this desire to, um, to allow everybody to have access to nature. And I think that was really, um, incredible. I will say this, as an Assembly member, though, she carried one piece of legislation related to Mission College. And a lot of people don't know that there was an exception necessary in order to build, um, our math science and physical education buildings, um, so close to the wash and so close to the space that was there. And she was, you know, when she was first approached with that, um, she was excited and more than happy, um, to do a little something for Mission College. Um, uh, and, uh, I was a big fan of the school and included it in lots of her work, um, out there. So, um, so with, with, uh, with a heavy heart, um, I think her presence and her work and her legacy, um, is going to be, um, always had in the northeast San Fernando Valley. And I guess there's a park named after her and, and, uh, and I know here at the district, as we adjourn in her memory as well, um, there is something to note about, uh, uh, the ability, um, to have substantial change and make an impact, uh, at whatever level of government you are, if you're motivated to do so. And so I know she's got a great part and we're adjourning in her memory and I appreciate the board, um, for, for doing this.
Thank you. Any other board members? I just briefly wanted to, you know, um, I was lucky enough to, um, work with Ms. Montañez and, um, you know, went to school with Ms. Montañez. And I could tell you that at that time, it wasn't popular to support LGBT causes. Um, and Cindy did do that. And she actually hired my ex-boyfriend, believe it or not, as one of his staff members. And that was the first, or for people, uh, hire, uh, openly LGBT people into the state legislature staff. So, really want to thank her for that. And then again, really with heavy heart. And again, there are no words, um, but I would also like to acknowledge, um, Gabriela Buena. Daughter of trustee Gabriela Buena. Tragically at the age of twenty-four in a car accident early in the morning on October twenty-third. A part of the L A C C D family and as we learn, an advocate for student housing and for students in general. With Buena took classes in the district and completed a baccalaureate degree at the University of California Riverside. She is survived by her parents and two sisters. At this time, I would like to ask, um, Dr. Buena, if he would like to make a comment and speak. I thought I saw him online. Yeah. No? Okay. Okay. Would any board members like to make any comments at this time? Vice President Henderson.
Um, I would just like to say, um, I think for all of us, our hearts go out to trustee Buena in this time of loss, whether you're a parent or not, just the unspeakable is the mourning the loss of a child. And yesterday, um, he and his wife and his daughter slayed um, his beautiful, intelligent, sweet, um, kind-hearted daughter to rest. And, um, it was a beautiful, beautiful, uh, celebration of her life, but, um, our hearts go out to him and his wife, Pilar, during this time. Um, and if you know him, feel comfortable, please reach out, because this is the time that, um, they'll really need our well wishes.
Thank you, Vice President Henderson. Anyone else from the board?
Just to add like to.
Just if it is.
One comment. And a chance to attend the services, um, yesterday as well. And, uh, for as, um, um, sort of heart-wrenching as they were personally, and I know in the audience, um, I don't think there was a face that was tearless. Um, I, I do, um, want to say thank you to trustee Buena, Gabe Gabriel, and, uh, his daughters and Pilar. Because their words were filled with grace and hope. And this positivity of moving forward, um, that, um, that I think, um, was, was amazing to watch and see and, uh, and experience and, um, for them to share that of themselves with the audience, when I think for as much as anything we wanted to, the, the audience wanted to be there for them, um, they did something that was absolutely amazing as a family. And, um, and I, I did want to raise the point that he also, um, very, very soon after the tragedy, attended, uh, our housing workshop, uh, with his daughter Paulina. Um, we had really had the pleasure of, uh, getting to know as an intern in my office for a few months, one summer, um, uh, to know that, um, um, those words as well were filled with this, um, beautiful spirit that really, um, represented their daughter, uh, in such an incredible way, you know, uh, and so I would be remiss to not, you know, point out just how amazing and positive, um, uh, their words were as, as each as individuals and together collectively as a family. So, deepest condolences to, to Gabriel and his daughters.
Thank you. Any other on this board members? Um, yeah, I, I really do believe that, um, there are really no words at this time, um, to console um, the family. And I agree with the, the, the priest at the service where, where, you know, he really emphasized on that. And, um, I do want to recognize that, you know, uh, trustee Buena came to our, our housing workshop. And I think to me, you know, as my last meeting as board president, I, I will ask administration to look at the possibility of honoring Gabriela through many of our future projects, um, that we are moving forward with, um, uh, in particular with student housing. And I would like to also, you know, um, make sure that, um, you know, Pilar Buena's words of, you know, living in the present really stick in our minds, because especially here in the world we work in and, and live in, uh, we forget, you know, that we really do have to appreciate what we have at this time. So, um, again, uh, condolences, uh, go out to the Buena family on behalf of the Los Angeles Community College District family, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, on behalf of every single person and student and employee and stakeholder in the Los Angeles Community College District. May God bless the Buena family. And at this time, let's take a moment of silence for both Cindy and Gabriela. Thank you. Thank you all very much. We'll now move, uh, to again, recognize that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Tongva, Tatavium, Serrano, Kiz and Tumash peoples. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing and reconciliation and to elevating the stories, culture and community of the original inhabitants of L A County. Before we take a motion to approve the agenda and order of business, Chancellor, are there any changes?
Yes, Mr. Vela, members of the board, there are two. One is a correction and one, we're going to pull an item. First, the correction, this is under Human Resources Consent Item N four. The revised attachment for the twenty-three, twenty-four academic managers' monthly rates will be added to the item to reflect the corrected pay scale for the job titles of Senior Lead, S I S Administrator and Vice President. So please note that. H R Consent Item N four, that is the correction. And we're going to pull item A A ten that would establish, uh, a bench of firms for marketing, communications and advertising services for the district. We do expect to return that item, uh, next month, but we will not be taking up items, um, A A ten today. So please note the correction and the point of that item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve the agenda and order of business with the amendments.
So moved.
Move by Ino.
Second.
Second by Henderson. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote? Yes. Trustee Buena, absent. Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Ino? Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Have a mo- or passes. May I have a motion and a second to approve the regular board minutes of October fourth, twenty-twenty-three and a special meeting on October eighteen?
A move.
Moved by Henderson.
Second.
Second by Ino. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote? Yes. Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Ino?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Next is a special presentation by our very own L A County Assessor, Jeff Prang. Yes, yeah, round of applause.
Uh, come on up to the podium.
I'm happy to announce that the Assessor's Workforce Development Program in partnership with County Council, Economic Opportunity, Human Resources, L A Community College District and Rio Hondo College was awarded for their efforts to provide access to training and educational opportunities vital to empowering future leaders with the tools they need to succeed. Mr. Prang, the floor is yours.
I think you said, I think you said everything. Um, the, I think, thank you very much, uh, Mr. President, members of the, uh, the board, uh, Chancellor, uh, Rodriguez. It's great to be with you today to, uh, celebrate a, uh, what is somewhat of a milestone in, uh, in a collaborative effort that we, uh, launched um, more than a year ago together to, uh, contribute to, uh, workforce development here in L A County. Um, this actually really began, God, about three years ago, a conversation I had with, uh, President Vela in the midst of, uh, a political campaign in twenty-twenty, when there were some, uh, ballot measures that would have had an, uh, incredible impact on my, my department and my ability to do, uh, do our job had they been adopted. And I, we were going to have to hire hundreds of, of professionals, real estate appraisers in particular, and train them in order to, uh, uh, to comply with that law, had it, had it passed. And I thought, there's just no way that I can hire the number of people that were required, um, in a governmental setting. And we talked about, um, developing a program where we could train these, uh, real estate appraisers in the community colleges and create a pipeline into jobs into L A County. Uh, mercifully, the measure that would have impacted us did not pass, uh, but the idea still seemed like a really good idea. Um, I have, uh, in my, in my office, I've got about seven hundred real estate appraisers. These are highly trained, highly skilled positions. Um, and I work for a large government agency like the Community College District. And as you know, it is very, very difficult to recruit onboard, uh, and, uh, train new employees and then to, uh, retain them. And sometimes attrition means we lose people faster than we can, uh, can fill them up, uh, fill the positions. And we needed another way to do this. And it occurred to me that the best way to do this would be to farm out the training of these, uh, these positions to the community colleges, um, who have the capacity to train more, frankly, train more people than we need, but to create a very large pool of, of, uh, of applicants who could qualify to apply for a job in the county. And L A County, as you know, is a really great place to work with good wages and benefits. And for a lot of graduates of community college, it could be really a transformative opportunity in their, in their life. And, uh, as a result of that conversation and, uh, discussions with, uh, with the chancellor, we have now successfully developed that program at West Los, Los Angeles College. And I wanted to, uh, acknowledge President Jim Limbaugh. Is, if he's, is he here?
Hey, yeah.
He has been absolutely dedicated to make certain that this program would be a success. We've had at least four classes, uh, three classes of appraisers go through this program at, uh, at West L A College. We have another, a class of thirty-one appraisers that are getting ready to start in the next couple of, of, of weeks. Um, it is a, uh, it's a, it's an innovative, a fairly uncommon program in, uh, at least in, in L A County. But something I think is going to be a great legacy for all of us. If, if we can create this, uh, jobs pipeline from the community colleges into L A County government, not just in the assessor's office, but there's multiple positions in L A County, which I think create great opportunities for, uh, graduates of L A C C D. Um, we're very proud of it. And we actually, uh, submitted, uh, an awards application to the county's um, Quality and Productivity Commission, uh, to see, and they agreed with us as well. And, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, uh, they awarded our department and our participating, uh, um, agencies. Uh, I did want to acknowledge, I think, uh, uh, trustee Henderson has something to do with, uh, with that commission.
Going to ask her, I know if she recused herself.
I hope that she put a thumb on the scale. Uh, I'm teasing, but, uh, we were acknowledged with the, uh, Special Merit Award, um, that they called Rising to the Extraordinary to, uh, uh, to recognize not only, uh, our department, but our other county departments who had a role in putting this program together. County Council, the Department of Economic Opportunity, Human Resources, uh, as well as our, uh, our partners here at L A C C D. They gave us some really fancy-looking plaques. Um, and they gave a, to discuss to me, they gave one for each of our, uh, each of our part, partners. And so I wanted to come here personally to thank you for your leadership, for your, uh, uh, insight and innovation to helping, uh, bring this program to, to fruition. Um, I was just talking to my staff today. I have the, uh, my chief appraiser over our training division. Uh, Joel is, uh, is, is with us, uh, today. He's the one who leads that program with, with our office. Um, I gave him a long laundry list, uh, to expand that program, to make it more robust, um, and to provide, provide more opportunities for potential students and potential employees of our office. But I wanted to come here today personally to, uh, to give you, uh, a copy of this plaque for your, for your very own in recognition of this, uh, of this great achievement that we've done together.
Thank you, Assessor. Let's go, let's have Dr. Limbaugh come up. Let's do a little photo op in the front here. Uh, trust, trustee, join us, please. Let's thank our very own county assessor, Jeff Prang, again. Thank you for coming and we really appreciate, um, our partnership and we'll continue to do that. And, you know, it's good for students and our faculty and everyone that's involved. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right. Next up are, are presentations. We are very excited today, uh, be, because we will be now conducting the ceremonial, uh, sick signing for the Los Angeles Orange County Counties and Construction Trades Council. All right. The L A Community College District and the L A Orange Counties, uh, Building and Construction Trades Council has reached a three-year successor collective barn agreement from July one, twenty-twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Congratulations again. And let's, uh, come on up. I know that the trades are here and we'll, uh, do a little ceremonial signing. Let's come on up. Yeah, if our trustees can come and. Yeah. I, I know, and so, and, and you are the, the top, the top, uh, echelon of the trades, right?
I appreciate that. And thanks for the opportunity to be able to say a couple of things. Unfortunately, I'm, I'm a little under dressed today. I spent, uh, the majority of the day on two rallies where we're fighting with the city of Los Angeles over a fair agreement. Uh, and we're hoping to reach that, which is in stark contrast to the district's approach to organized labor. I just want to compliment, um, all, you know, the Board of Trustees, along with everybody at Labor Relations, Rick and his, his crew, they were e- extremely well professional. Their approach was very organized and it's rare. We bargain with five public sector employers and none of it, n- not one of them approaches their, their vital people the way you do here at the district. And I just want to thank everyone.
Thank you, Chad. All right. So let's, let's start.
I better put my glasses on here. I'll end up, I'll end up being Rick or, 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 uh, Chancellor Rodriguez if I don't, not careful here.
Oh, nice. Very nice signature.
Well, you guys are being too kind.
All right, let me do my little, uh, outline here. Little fakie one.
It looks good on me.
There you go. Ms. Williams, why don't you come on up too?
Um, and, uh, and Rick, Rick. Get, uh, Rick, come on.
This is the first time I see Rick shy. I mean, come on up here.
Dr. Limbaugh accolades, he was on this bar.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Tiana, you do the next signature and then Rick. Oops. All right. Nice. This is another one. Wow.
I pin one up.
Movie stars. All right, one more. All right. One more? Live with, oh. Um, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and, and the Los Angeles Community College community, I did want to let you know and your, um, members that we are really appreciative. We really do appreciate the partnership. Um, it is vital to Los Angeles County's economy that we can, um, agree on moving forward on wages, on moving forward, how we treat workers, on safety, which is big for you all. And so I really do want to talk about those partnerships with labor, how important they are. It's not always about making a profit in the private world. It's always about how we treat our employees and how we really treat, um, your members, in particular with such a vast uh, building program that we have here. So Chad, thank you so much. Really appreciate you again. And thank you. Another round of applause to our trades. They work hard. And, and by the way, you look like you've been fighting a little bit, but, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I, I wish you luck. I wish you luck. Thank you guys so much. All right. So from, uh, another one of our, um, representatives for, for our unions, let's go ahead and see if any of the members of the resource table have anything to, uh, let us know about. Please come up to the podium. I mean, Trevi, you want to come up first or? Please come up to the podium. Ms. Echeverry, you want to come up first or whoever would like to come?
Good afternoon. My name is Angela Echeverry. And I am currently serving as the District Academic Senate President. I'm also a faculty member at LA Mission College. Sixty years ago, sixty years ago, in nineteen sixty-three, Dr. Martin Luther King said the following. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. An injustice to one is an injustice to all, as we are all inextricably linked, connected in the fabric of life. Today, I'm going to talk about sexual harassment. Usually when I come here, I talk about math and English, AB seven oh five, AB seventeen oh five, et cetera. Today, I'm just going to talk about sexual harassment. A few days after the October board meeting, the Los Angeles Times published an online article about a landmark sexual harassment and discrimination case at Southwest College, which resulted in a ten million dollar courtroom verdict for a tenured faculty member, Dr. Sabrina Odom Turner. After deliberating for one day, the jury found that a senior administrator had sexually harassed the faculty member for several years. The district had failed to prevent and investigate the harassment, had also retaliated against her and was negligent in employing the administrator who had a criminal history. The fact that Dr. Odom Turner, a tenured faculty member, and several others had to endure such an ordeal for years without resolution through district channels speaks to an institutional failure that will go down in history as one of the district's most shameful moments. The first question when asked, when I heard about this, is how did this happen? Why did an employee have to resort to a jury trial to protect herself in this situation? The chancellor and the district have all the necessary tools at their disposal to prevent something like this from happening, including an Office of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, Title IX coordinators, board policies and administrative procedures, complaint forums, human resources staff, grievance representatives, collective bargaining agreements, task forces and mandatory employee training. Last month alone, the board approved revisions to its policies and administrative procedures on sexual assault. But I don't think these changes would have made a difference. Because this failure, this injustice did not happen because of the lack of tools and resources. Therefore, the most important question we have to ask ourselves is why did this happen? Why did the district fail to protect its employees and students? Why did it allow this behavior to jeopardize the well-being of the college community? It is painfully necessary that all of us ask these important questions. We can no longer afford to tolerate a culture of silence and indifference, if nothing else, because the district will be in danger of insolvency if it continues to operate in such a reckless manner. When someone who was under multiple investigations for sexual harassment and other improprieties is not only protected, but also handpicked, handpicked to sit on the selection panel for a ninety million dollar security and safety contract, the district is not acting responsibly. Such a decision undermines public safety and compromises the integrity of public funds. And that is a concern to your constituents and the employee organizations that support you. The narrative that is beginning to emerge is that more than anything, this issue was a public corruption. Public corruption issue in which unfortunately sexual harassment was enabled. You need to know that that is the narrative that is emerging. All forms, I don't need to tell people in this room, all forms of sexual harassment and discrimination erode a culture of respect. They undermine social justice, they interfere with the mission of the colleges, and they're incompatible with the system-wide goals and they jeopardize the well-being of all members of the college community. The district received an ACCJC commendation for its work on social justice and equity. But such commendations are meaningless when several women of color were subjected to abuse for years without being able to obtain basic protections that should be afforded to all. In a strategy reminiscent of other failed cover-ups of sexual abuse, the administrator was first transferred to another college, then put on administrative leave or considered for leave and was finally terminated quietly this year after the milestone jury verdict. Justice demands integrity. It's to have a moral universe, not only know what is right or wrong, but to put things in perspective, weigh things. From Bell Hooks, I respectfully suggest that the district from here on focus on addressing and cleaning up the problem instead of covering them up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Echeverry. Anyone else from the resource tables? Please come on up. Dr. McKeever, thank you.
First, I want to say that AFT fifteen twenty-one, hearts and minds and heads and prayers are with the well-known family. I mean, it's a tragic loss and no one wants to lose their child. And so I also want to thank President Echeverry for, for very thoughtful words on this issue. And I want to address that first before I move on to something else. Sexual harassment is an endemic, an endemic that has been allowed to fester in all areas of our society. An endemic that has negatively affected primarily women in the queer community's life chances, physical and mental health. Imagine having to go to a job and work with, with someone who will make inappropriate comments, suggestions and advances towards you every day. It saddens and angers me to say that too many people in this room don't have to imagine what it feels like because they have and some continue to experience it. I take this issue seriously in AFT fifteen twenty-one, just last month passed its first harassment policy. It was long overdue. District, this district has to change. Firing one harasser means nothing if you allow others to stay in place. The district must examine its implementation of its procedures and policies to protect everyone's right to a harassment-free workplace. This case is a wake-up call for us all. All must play an part in making our district a safe space for our students, staff, faculty and administrators. It's our obligation to each other. It must be a priority for this board and the chancellor to take the lead. It's your ultimate responsibility. Last, and on another note, and I must talk about this because I have some serious concerns here. I have serious concerns with the first issue and some serious and medium concerns on what scheduling may look like in our future. What happened to trade was unacceptable on so many levels. Whatever the narrative was, that they never intended to cut forty percent of the classes or not, it was the objective fact that an administrator, administration member sent out the communication stating that they wanted to eliminate over four hundred classes from an existing slightly over one thousand offerings. That's a fact and that's forty percent. We didn't pull this number out of nowhere. That's where the number came from. And I want to make that clear. If you think an acceptable narrative is that it was only supposed to be eighteen percent, you're wrong. Eighteen percent represent nearly one out of five classes and one out of five jobs. This made no sense since all this happened when trade was experiencing consistent growth and headed in the right direction. AFT fifteen twenty-one will never stand by and watch our students lose opportunities and our faculties lose jobs without a fight. Efficiency models may be best for the short-term, short-term bottom line, but are not good for growth, our students, faculty and community and the district's future. I will say this, Santa Monica did the same thing. They cut about twenty percent of their classes. They seem to have accepted the fact that they will no longer be a large campus and they will be a medium campus and focus on a smaller number of students. This is not fair to the community around Santa Monica College, who depends on Santa Monica College for opportunity. This would not be fair to our campuses either. As we approach Hold Harmless, many of you are worried. We share in your concerns. Let's work together to ensure the long-term success of our students and campuses. And last, I do want to thank President McQuarters for listening to the students, the faculty and the community and agreeing to cease the cuts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on up, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Bruce Hicks. I'm the SEIU seven twenty-one president. I'm here representing the interests of our members. And first thing I want to say is hello to you, President Vella, Vice President Henderson, Vice President Lino, student trustee and all the board members here today. Thank you for having us today. I came here to give some updates on what's going on with SEIU right now. Since September, we've been working with the district in negotiations, trying to negotiate a new contract. It's very important that our members receive competitive wages, that they get some of the entitlements and the rights that they so deserve. My group, our group, is a hardworking group. We are the middle managers in between the frontline workforce and the executive leadership in the district. A lot of times our members feel that they're not actually, their inputs are not even, it's not as important as they are. But I'm here to remind them that the inputs that we put into the district as supervisors help and lead to student success and successful outcomes for the mission critical goal, the Los Angeles Community College District. So as I go forward, I want to give some accolades to our bargaining members. I'm going to remember all of them. Shandra Mill, our treasurer. She's been putting in a lot of work. She works here in the district office. Mary Van Ginkgo, a part of our bargaining team. These are regular individuals and people who have took the role of union leadership. And I want to act, give them their flowers right now and be thankful for them. Derek Williams, he's our delegate out of Harbor College. Our vice president, Mary John, who's been working diligently on our team. Robert Mix at Southwest, our steward chair. Sharon Baker at Pierce College on our bargaining team. I better not forget one of them. And if I do, blame it on my, don't blame it on my heart, but all our members. So we're about three quarters of the way through in the bargaining and I am very motivated. Under the leadership of Tiana Williams and Rick Von Colen. The reason why I'm saying this, I've negotiated multiple contracts and this is one of, been one of the most pragmatic negotiation sessions I've ever been a part of, where we actually working through language right in front of everybody's, it's pretty effective and we're getting some good outcomes. So I want to thank you both for that. So that's where we're at. We hope, I want to congratulate the Buildings and Trades Council for their ratification and their contract signing today. So we're looking forward to doing that really soon as we close out. So I will, I can't wait to ratify and give all this information to our members. And we're pounding on a pretty good contract for them as far as I'm concerned. And we'll be taking that to them soon and we'll be right here back in front of you. On another note, I just want to give you some of the things that's, we're still working with the district as it relates to the Classified Managers Association, bringing some of those members into our unit. Our group has met and continues to meet with them about some of their issues. And we're working with the district to make sure, and I'm asking for the support from the board, that none of these transitioning members, when it's all said and done, lose any benefits, entitlements or rights that they previously had. And we're going to continue to work hard to make sure that happens. We're working on the MOU for that. And then lastly, some of the things that are working behind the scenes in SEIU right now. We do our consultations, of course, with HR, with the PC. We get a lot of input from our membership and one of the concerns that our membership has right now is the, what some of our members see as a proverbial, you know, glass ceiling, stopping some of our members from moving from one location, excuse me, from one position to another outside of SEIU. We've been speaking with the PC and we just want to work with them. We're going to continue to work with them to create pathways for our membership. If you think about the American way, starting at the mailroom or the box as a custodian or whatever, there's plenty of stories in our history where members or people like that, employees have started at the lowest and risen all the way to the top. And our hope is that we can create those pathways for our members, that they can, these are hardworking people. They are doing the work and they're getting education behind that to solidify the reason why they can move forward. So we're just working on these pathways right now and we'll continue to work with them. I want to reach out to some of the administrators at campus because you actually know who these hardworking members are on your campus and you can reach out to the Personnel Commission and ask in the way of some of these EQ requirements of these people that you know that are doing the job and you know that can do it. So I just want to thank you for my, for your time. And I want to tell our members who are watching or sitting at home to continue to work hard, keep walking, even when you're discouraged, when you maybe don't get the promotion or you haven't got qualified for a certain position or the interview. Just keep working. SEIU, the executive board and our leadership team are fighting in the background for you and will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Hello, hello. Had to bring the laptop, but I won't be too long. Well, good afternoon, board president Vella, VP trustee Henderson, VP Enno and Chancellor Rodriguez. Good afternoon to the distinguished guests in person and online and to my members as well. So I want to stop really quick and AFT sends our deepest condolences, condolences, excuse me, the family of Cindy Montez and the trustee Bill and his family. We pray for peace and strength that surpasses all understanding. There's no deeper sorrow and grief, the more humanistic approach that unifies us all. I think outside of everything that we deal with in life, we forget how precious that, that gift is, right? And so our prayers, you know, those with the families. Again, I definitely want to start off by saying that AFT fifteen twenty-one A is here in partnership with the LA CCD and this flagship district. I say that again because that's a huge pat on the back, okay? We're a flagship district. We stand in forever partnership to serve our students and to increase enrollment and the matriculation in this post-pandemic era, to change generational legacies, right? I definitely want to take a pause and also thank trustee Hernandez for that excellent work at the Public Housing Forum and to see every single one of the Board of Trustees there, Chancellor Rodriguez. What? Talk about talking and walking the walk when it comes to fighting the battles for our students who are dealing with housing insecurities, homelessness. So I was so proud to see the work and I was so proud to walk around and to engage with everyone. And the beautiful thing is they actually wanted our, our input. So I was put sticky tabs with every single one of the posts in each corner. And if you didn't get a chance to see what was going on, everybody was engaged and it was beautiful to see. Not Discord, but everyone standing with our students. So thank you for that. I'm so grateful to see it. Definitely want to piggyback and I am going to take some of those things from SEIU seven twenty-one. President Hicks, you are correct. We, we have these conversations, but we definitely need to understand where it's classified. Your managers, whether it's your faculty, your counselors, there should be an equitable ladder for us to climb. Classified is often too riddled with that, taking a test in order to get a job. Once you take that test to get a job, you then have to hope that there's a campus hiring for that job. You then sit on a list, you can interview at six campuses, and that doesn't mean that even if you pass a test, and I'm not a test taker. Even if you pass the test, it doesn't guarantee that you'll get anywhere. We have members that have been stuck at step five, twenty-five plus years. So in that pathways, please don't forget us in that conversation, as the majority of us have degrees that outpace the original hiring. So if a job says a high school degree, don't think most of us don't have a master's degree and go off for doctoral degrees. We do. Okay, thank you for that. And also standing with Dr. McKeever from AFT fifteen twenty-one. When it's cutting class, it also cuts us who care to serve the members. That is our primary function. It also impacts us with changing our hours and our shift. We could say business necessity, but we still should be open to business and increase the B shift and increase students coming to the campus that works for their schedule, not just ours. What do I have to say? We are still in active negotiations, and I do thank Vice Chancellor Williams and her negotiation team for make sure, or ensuring accessibility when it comes to scheduling. They have never not come back to us and say, well, what day works for you? And we want a full eight hours. So I appreciate that. I still stand here to our members saying that we will always fight for language that protects you and speaks to your unique and specific issues. We stand in solidarity with all of our unions, but we definitely need to stand and also fights for contractual language that protects us on our unique issues that pertain to our members. So we will never stop fighting to add that language, to keep that language, but to also continually fight for wage and salary equity for our members as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have someone online from Teamsters. Do we have anyone else from the resource table? Okay, please come up.
Chancellor Rodriguez and members of the Board of Trustees.
Okay, can we, we're going to first go with Chris Ozan here from SEIU ninety-nine, and then we'll get you right now, Donna. Okay, we'll get you in. Please.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees and Chancellor. My name is Chris Ozan, represent SEIU Local ninety-nine. I would first like to express my deepest condolences to trustee Buena for that tragic and unexpected passing of his daughter. My prayers are with him and his family. It's disappointed there are countries, that countries are still trying to resolve conflict with war, death, and destruction like in Ukraine, Russia, Israel, Hamas. When, when will these senseless killings stop? I wish that talk and resolution within all these conflicts. I pray for peace for these countries and for all the innocent people and families affected by these wars. While war is going on in other, other countries, here in the United States, again, we are dealing with another mass shooting that took place in Maine following by a series of gun violence that has plagued this country. I'm deeply saddened by the, for the victims and their loved ones that are suffering from, suffering from these tragic events. I hope that our district security department is doing all they can to be prepared in, in the event there is a situation like this on campus. And as we celebrate Veterans Day, I want to acknowledge the men and women in our military that helped protect this country. Thank you for your commitment, dedication, and service to our country. And I also want to acknowledge National Native American Heritage Month and recognize our indigenous people for their rich history, struggles, and celebration of their culture. There are a couple of concerns I want to bring to this board today. The first concern is dealing with our members working in a hostile and toxic work environment. I have been bringing this concern to the board for quite some time. We are still having the same issues dealing with how our members are being mistreated in the workplace, mainly with our custodial staff. Some of our custodial staff are treated and talked to with the most disrespect by custodial supervisors. And I'm not speaking to all supervisors because there are a lot of supervisors that are very professional towards our custodial staff. But I'm speaking on the campus that keep having the same issue, issues with bullying and harassing the custodial staff at Trade Tech College. Campuses are already sure staff, yet we have supervisors that are abusing their power, talking to our members unprofessionally like they're kids, using profanity, micromanaging them, and pushing them to clean multiple assignments every day because the district want hire more custodial staff, and this is unacceptable. Because of this type of toxic culture that is being imposed on our members, it impacts the morale, attendance, productivity of work. And people are just not, they're not going to keep subjecting themselves to this type of abuse. So I ask, what are you waiting for? For some serious consequences to happen before you put rules in place before, for bullying and harassment? With everything that's going on in the world, we need policies in place now that addresses bullying and harassment in the workplace. The standard, the standards for the work environment and conduct needs to be set by this board so it can be followed by everyone in the district. The main reason some employees are being bullied and harassed and supervisors are getting away with this behavior is because there is no accountability from the district. This is a problem and a culture that needs to change. A person can only take so much abuse from someone, and I hope and pray that this board doesn't wait until a catastrophic event happened or someone ends up suing the district because this concern wasn't taken seriously or made as a priority to address. Lastly, I want to bring up a concern regarding the forms that the district is requesting employees to submit for FMLA. It was brought to my attention that members are having difficulty trying to get FMLA based on this form that is being requested by the district. Our members believe the questions that are being asked on the form for FMLA is too intrusive and have nothing to, has nothing to do with them receiving FMLA. And members have complained of being denied FMLA based on this form. Members have complained that when they submit the form to the district, it's denied and returned to them for their, for their physician to redo. However, physicians are having a hard time completing this form. We had a member submit their FMLA form three times because it was denied by the district until finally the member just gave up and stopped trying for, and stopped, you know, applying for FMLA. And I believe this is something that should be looked at to make sure the district is complying with the laws in terms of questions that can legally be asked when someone is applying for FMLA, and make sure that the form is, is clear and, and on the questions that's being asked. Thank you, and I hope everyone have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ozan. Next, it'll be Donna with Teamsters. Go ahead and unmute yourself. It's Villanueva, go ahead.
Thank you. Chancellor Rodriguez and members of the board, my name is Donna Mae Villanueva, Dean of Academic Affairs at LA Pierce College, and I come before you today serving as the acting president of Teamsters while Dean Deborah Harrington is out on leave from Teamsters. We've also had several other changes within our executive board. We congratulate Dr. Tangela Alfred as the Vice President of Student Services at LA Southwest College. And Mary Ann Gavara O, our Dean of Arts and Languages at LA Pierce College, now serves as our acting treasurer. Finally, the Teamsters will be holding its fall annual membership meeting tomorrow at UCLA. The focus of our day is on our newly ratified contract. Thank you again for your support of our tiny but mighty force, Dean Still.
Thank you so much, Team Villanueva. Appreciate you being here, and our regards to Ms. Dean Harrington. Next, if you allow me, I am going to bring up, out of order, H five, which is a resolution for the civic center permits for use for socio-economically disadvantaged and district service area community organizations. Without any objection, I'll go ahead and get a motion and a second, and we'll have some discussion. Again, to our trustees, this is the resolution that the district worked hard for in order to have disadvantaged communities be able to use our site, which is fantastic. So can I have a motion and a second?
A move.
Move by Henderson?
Second.
Second by, we'll give it to trustee, we'll give it to you, trustee. Yeah, no, that's good. Thank you so much. Yeah, so at this time during discussion, I'll pass it over to trustee Vettis, who wants to say a few words, and then we'll pass it over to Ms. Hoffman, sorry. Ms. Hoffman and then Ms. Henderson. Okay, thank you all.
Is this an item for action, for approval?
It is.
Okay, I'm just wondering, do we need to take public comment before, on that item before we bring it up?
We can open the public comment for just that item?
Yeah.
I think that would be great.
I think that's Brown Act.
And the request comes out of the fact that there is a window of time that several organizations were given, and
Okay.
we're trying to keep them together.
Without objection, we'll insert public comment into the resolution. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. So let me, let me sort of frame this resolution and then ask the clerk if she can open up the public comment period, and we have some in-person guests as well to speak on this. This, this resolution really stems from a couple of events that have taken place over the last year and a half or so at the college. I was proud to work with several trustees and, and all of our presidents and our athletic directors and the chancellor in athletics and athletic facility ad hoc committee. We got a chance to see and hear from our student athletes, get feedbacks on states of our, our facilities and, and, and really, it did a couple of things. One, it educated us to the need for resources and improvements. We had some standard, substandard spaces that needed attention. We had some places that could be maximized a little better with lights. And so we made a decision as a collective here to include the improvement of our fields as well as pre nineteen seventies buildings in our bond. And the voters overwhelmingly supported that, and I know that was a wonderful part of the conversation that went around the region. At, at the same time, I think we also identified that the overarching set of rules that covered the community use of the facilities, and it was a little different than civic use, was just about fifty years old. And up for the state Community College Board for a set of updates. And so the district took it upon itself and worked very closely with Assembly Member Tina McKinner to, to engage in a very specific update, and that's AB eleven fifty-one. The bill moved very quickly through and was signed with, with great support and energy in both houses and with the governor. And so the key component of that essentially names the opportunity for districts to work closely with socio-economically disadvantaged. And it, it, as opposed to what fifty years ago, didn't include, essentially outright include youth sports. And one of the things that we know across our district is that one of the bigger users and requests of use really comes out of our, our youth and our community. And, and so with that bill passed, with that prioritization laid on the table, it was an opportunity for this district to begin the implementation of that bill and to cement in a, in a very good way and formalize our connection with our community, community colleges. You know, we exist within a community. Sometimes, you know, there's cases that I think we found over the years where locals across the street may not even have had a chance to get on the campus, but we've spent years and millions of dollars improving our campuses, and so the opportunity to bring as many people to showcase what we are, what we have, and to let them know that this is a great place for them is, is before us. I do want to thank in the sort of couple of years building to this forward, a few of the presidents that I've had a chance to work with, and, and, and especially I see in trial and experiment over at Valley College with President Grivens, oftentimes seeing a whole, you know, whether you got a pool or a gym or a gymnastics floor, baseball, softball, soccer, they're all going at the same time, and, and we have to think about stuff like, where's the trash go? You know, how do we keep this place looking as great as it can? And so I know there's, and all the presidents in their ways with, with athletics and with youth sports, you know, Pierce has a long history with, with community soccer. We all do some fantastic things here. But it was clear to us that we didn't quite have a fee schedule that sometimes all the way made sense. Everything's were a little bit different. We were just trying to figure it out. So I think this for us sort of announces that we want to have the doors wide open. We want to work closely with people. And we want to acknowledge those groups that are out there, those community groups that are out there that really go out of their way to mentor, to remove barriers, to engage in the youth in such a way that it makes going to college second thought. Not a long lost thought, or something that they can't even fathom, but something that's just going to be part of their, their, their being. And so, so with that, I wanted to ask, first of all, we have some speakers from organizations, and, and I want to ask James Lopez and Fernando Ramirez to come up from, from the Play Equity Fund here in Los Angeles, and I know the Play Equity Fund is a organization that comes out of LA eighty-four. Come on up, guys. And, and please bring your team up. And they'll get a chance to tell you a little bit about what they're working on, what they're doing, and then introduce. And I hope we can take this part as the public comment, open and open to anybody else that's beyond this, so we can have it be official since it's an action here, that really understands in Los Angeles, we are dealing with disadvantaged equity questions, but we have an incredible set of organizations that are really confronting it head-on. And so it's great to align us with those efforts and to really be able to take steps forward. So James and Fernando, if you can.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Fernando Ramirez. I'm the Vice President at the Play Equity Fund. As trustee Verraz mentioned, we were founded by the LA eighty-four foundation, which is the legacy of the eighty-four Olympic Games. Our mission is simple. We believe all children have a right to play regardless of age, gender, sexuality, ability, and income, period. And with that as our driving mission, we've really started as conveners in the county with the mom and pop nonprofits that service our youth every day through sports-based youth development organizations. Had the privilege of convening over the last few months. Trustee Verraz was at our campus in March. Really heard loud and clear access to space and facilities is of paramount importance to our organizations that really service our youth. And so happy to see Assembly Member McKinner advancing the legislation at the state level. As you mentioned, it moved very fast, no, no votes, I believe. So we're excited to see that and excited for the resolution here today. Trustee Verraz, Eno, and Henderson, thank you for moving it forward, and to the entire board for advancing this important work. Really looking to get the mom and pop nonprofits out there and connecting them to their resources. I'll tee up Isali, who is with Hollenbeck Power, one of the nonprofits we work with in the community.
Hi, my name is Siklali Hernando. I work for Hollenbeck Police Activities League. We're a nonprofit in Boyle Heights. We provide underserved boys and girls ages three to eighteen with a wide variety of recreational activities and sports. Unfortunately, for about seven months this year, we didn't have a field to use, so we couldn't provide sports for our kids. And we realized Elac was like down the street from us, like ten minutes away, and then LA ACCC was down the other side, fifteen minutes away. So they're pretty close, and we, we really would love the opportunity to be able to use their fields. And creating more access to athletic facilities is a game changer for nonprofits like ours. So thank you so much for your support.
Good afternoon. My name is James Lopez, and I also represent the Play Equity Fund. We're a nonprofit focused on removing barriers to sport, play, and movement for kids. So we don't serve youth directly. Like Fernando said, we, we're a convenor and collaborator. We want to support those who do and advocate and support opportunities that create more access to play. And we're speaking in support of the, the current resolution that we're speaking about, number five, and we think this really has a big opportunity, a big opportunity to make a great impact in our communities. I think it's a great opportunity for the colleges to become a household name in their communities and to become a familiar place, a community, a true civic center by tapping into, by creating relationships with these organizations to provide youth access and giving them the opportunity to play and to develop physically, emotionally, socially, so that they can get those long-term benefits that we know sport provides. We just want to express thank you to trustees Verraz, Henderson, and Eno for advancing the resolution and all of the trustee's support. And thank you to Assembly Member McKinner for authoring the bill at the state level. You know, if we all work together, we can really close the play equity gap, and access to fields and access to gyms and athletic facilities is a longstanding barrier across LA County, really. And we know that if, if we put our heads together and, and lead with an equity lens, we can create more opportunities for youth. Thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, so I know we do have some more folks online actually that want to speak on this, so I'll go ahead and go through the list now. Evan Unrau, go ahead and unmute yourself. Evan.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Evan Unrau, and I represent a sports-based youth nonprofit called Peace Players Los Angeles. We use the game of basketball to provide leadership development programs to youth ages, youth ages eight to eighteen throughout South Los Angeles. I'm here speaking on this resolution number five. For us, expanding access to sport facilities would really be huge for organizations such as ourselves. We need basketball courts to do what we do, and a major obstacle for a lot of our And a major obstacle for a lot of our youth is limited access to safe fields, gyms, and other athletic spaces. We've seen it's really limited young people's involvement in sports and recreation and physical activity. This decision would mark a really positive mood forward, and we as an organization will be really excited to collaborate with nearby community colleges to bring our impactful programs and our youth to kids and families in the community nearby. We want to be part of the solution and be collaborative. And again, just echoing what James and Fernando and everyone is, providing more access to sport and play and movement in a safe way. So thank you for hearing this and for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mark May. Mark, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me good?
Sure can. Very, very good.
Thank you. No, it was exciting to be here. I apologize in advance for not being able to be there in person and feel the energy that's in the room as well as I see through the Zoom that it's a lot of positive energy in the place. So I just want to thank you guys for that. My name is Mark May. I'm representing, I'm the executive director of an organization called Project Blue, where we too work with the Play Equity Fund and L eighty-four foundation. And what we do is we convene partners and resources to create access and opportunity for our young people through their various sports and after-school programs. I'm excited, you know, to be speaking in support of resolution number five, which is on today's agenda and really just thankful for everything that has been done thus far to create this space and create this opportunity for us to have access. Like James and Evan and, you know, Fernando stated, and said Lally stated, like, you know, having access to certain fields or just fields in general have been tough for us. I know a few of my programs have had kids just kind of fall by the wayside by not having anything to do because we don't have access to facilities. And, you know, we're trying to keep them off the streets and keep them active in positive things. And sometimes that's really hard when we don't have the access to the facilities and spaces to do so while, you know, a lot of the schools and things like that have been just overwhelmed with other things, right? So to be able to have a space in some of the local community colleges is a game changer, I feel. Because even for myself growing up, you know, looking at some of our local colleges and community colleges, you know, they seem untouchable, you know, for us to access, not just to play, but sometimes what that does to the mind is when it's like we can't even get there to play. Sometimes it creates a space in our mind where we feel like we can't even go there, you know? So this is kind of changing the game on that level to give us the space to really change the mind of some of our young people that not only can they access these places to play and do what they love, but it's also an opportunity for them to dream big and create hope in their own minds that this is somewhere that they can be right here in their own community. So a big thank you to trustee Vares, Henderson, Eno for just advancing this much-needed resolution. And a super thank you to Assemblymember Tina McConner for authorizing A B one one five one to, you know, allow this to happen. You know, a lack of access to fields, gyms, and just other spaces have been something our community has been plagued with for a very long time. So me being a member of the community and being a leader in my community now, I'm just really, really excited to be speaking about this and creating these access points to close that equity gap that everyone has spoke about. Because our kids need it. You know, our kids are our future. We want them to grow up and take care of us one day. So we have to continue to guide them down the right path of success. And this is a step in that direction. So thank you, everybody, for your continuous involvement and engagement and just support of what we're trying to do on a ground level. And in return, our kids and our future will pay us back by being the best citizens that they can possibly be. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Everett Glenn. Everett, go ahead and unmute yourself. Okay, not online. And Monica Sanchez. Monica, you want to unmute yourself? I'm not online. Okay. And at this time, is there any trustees that would like to discuss this resolution? I'll start here to my left with trustee Hoffman.
Thank you, President Vella. Thank you. I think this is a really, really great opportunity and a win-win for kids, for sports, for our colleges. I just want to make sure that somehow youth teams will be prioritized. And I know we have to kind of go through the process and figure out how that's all going to work. But thank you, trustee Vares, for taking the lead on this and bringing it forward. Both of my kids played sports since they were very little. I know what it's like sometimes and with the parks being overcrowded. And, you know, you drive by our campuses and they're beautiful. And it's really a great way to introduce young people to college as well. So thank you. This is great. Thanks for being here today.
Thank you so much. Just get another.
Do you know what, you know, so many people have said, I grew up playing volleyball and basketball and track at the local community college down the street from my house. And so it was so important to my upbringing. I'm just really, really appreciative, trustee Vares, for that you're championing this. It's so important.
Thank you so much. To the right, trustee.
Yeah, I went to public school and I also attended after-school programs. So I know how important it is to provide activities. And like he said, keeping the students busy so that they're not involving themselves in other things that aren't as resourceless what we're providing here. So. For that.
Trustee Eno.
I think I feel really honored since my short time here on the board, I've been able to serve on the ad hoc committee as well as the legislative and public affairs committee. And to be able to really accomplish all of this in such a short amount of time to serve the community has been really heartwarming. And it shows how important these roles are and how we look to support the community. I'm also an athletic counselor. And so to be able to build stronger pipelines for students in their competitiveness and just for health, wellness, and their mind and overall is just a really great thing. I think we're currently worried about the Cali Getzi eliminating health and wellness classes from the curriculum at the community college level to transfer. And I think this hopefully shows how health and wellness and athletics are so critical for everyday human lives. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Vice President Henderson.
Yes, I am extremely excited about this. My kids play Pop Warner football, tiny top baseball, basketball. When I was a public school teacher, I coached volleyball and softball. Most significantly, I met my husband when our kids played Pop Warner football. So youth athletics is very important on a lot of levels as a relationship builder. But the opportunity for the community colleges to be involved, as everyone says, is a pathway to encouraging students to see themselves in the world around them and have greater access to education through sports is tremendous. And I'm really glad that we're coming together. And again, trustee Vares, thank you for your taking the lead on this.
All right. Thank you, everyone. If no further comment, let's do World Cup, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote? Yes. Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman? Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vares?
Yes.
All right. So motion passes. Congratulations. Question better.
I do want to say, I know we still have some administrative work to do with our board policy and our fee schedule and stuff like that. But as we have our friends here from the Play Equity Fund, if at some point we can do a gathering with our cap, with our presidents here, so they can meet those individuals, you can see all the, there's, they have members in every square inch of this district. They need a few more in the valley sometimes, I think, from what I remember. But certainly to understand the breadth of them and the energy of them and for them to get a chance to meet you and especially some of the new presidents who are getting their foundations resettled here. I think the initiative is amazing. I think they are going to be the legacy fund now for World Cup and L A twenty-eight. Or I should say, your partner fund, right? So they share the same location. But there's a lot of energy around and a lot of potential partnerships. And we were speaking right before the end of our, or right before our meeting started about Measure J funding coming out of the county and lots of things that incorporate youth sports and as opportunities to be intervention, to be connected space. And so I think with all this energy floating around, it behooves us to be aware, to be, to have strong relationships and to take advantage of all the opportunities there in front of us. So if at some point Chancellor, if you can make sure everybody connects and they know they have resources in the community they can use.
Thank you so much. All right. We receive a chancellor's monthly report, which includes activities at the colleges from our college presidents. Do any of the presidents wish to further comment? Please come up to the podium.
Good afternoon. President Vella, trustees and Chancellor Rodriguez, good to be here with you today. I also want to just first thank all the trustees for being on our campus at the housing forum. All seven of them were in attendance, including our chancellor, for a great conversation about housing and the opportunities for our community. Just, I'll be brief. We're having our ninth annual fall hiring spree November sixteenth on our campus in partnership with the Cal Works Career Center and L A C O E. This year's hiring spree will be a big event to really bring the community to provide opportunities for jobs for our students. So this will be a big event. And we are going to be on K call on Monday with my vice president to really spread the word on this event to provide jobs and opportunities for our community and the students that we serve. We're also very excited to kick off our first season in over thirteen years this Friday against L A Pierce College for our basketball team. So we're excited about that. We're hoping to take the win too and bring home a rich addition and sports to our community and to City College. Also, just want to kick off, we're having Safety Week, November thirteenth to the seventeenth. LACC is organizing an event where we focus on connecting with our deputies, de-escalation training, CPR certification, mental health awareness, self-defense courses, as well as a senior leadership emergency response exercise to ensure the safety for our campus and our community as we continue to connect with all those on our campus. Thank you and I'll see you soon.
Thank you very much.
President Vella, Vice President Henderson, and Vice President Eno, Chancellor. We truly want to appreciate the work that you are doing to support Southwest College. I just want to remind you, if you haven't already been informed, Food for Less provided five thousand dollars for our food pantry at Southwest College. And it went newspaper-wide, if you will. So it's a continual effort to serve the basic needs of our students. And we are now in conversations, not only for that five thousand dollar check, but you know how we do. You give us one piece, we're going to look for the rest of the pie. So, but they're doing well. Also want to quickly invite you once again to the Presidential Lifetime Achievement Award celebration or ceremony that is happening on this coming Saturday. Dolores, Aunt Dolores will be honored for her years of service to the community, especially to Southwest College. You should have received that invitation. Hopefully you can attend. Certainly also, this coming Saturday is also the homecoming for the winning Cougars. And so we're looking forward to you all coming and being part of the homecoming. We have a wonderful celebration that is planned for all of you to enjoy. So please come if you're able to make it. And certainly, lastly, but certainly not least, from the Southwest College, we truly want to extend our condolences to the Welnah family and also to the family of the other young person, lives that passed too soon. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Phil Pepper. Next.
Good afternoon, President Vella, trustees, chancellor. First again, also want to extend my condolences to the Welnah and the Montañez family. I did obviously know Cindy as well. And of course, our heart is with trustee Welnah and his family. Couple of things. Month of November for us, we're reflecting and really celebrating contributions and histories and tradition of our Native American indigenous communities. We have some activities planned in addition to also the sacrifices and historical legacy of our veterans. We have several events planned over the course of this week. And today we hosted our first generation college celebration. I want to ask the crowd here, how many of you are first in your family to go to college? First gen? That's many of us. Look at the Dr. Dorado there. We honor, and for many of us, this is the first time that we can change intergenerational poverty by giving access and opportunity to many of our students who are first in their family to go to college. So we at ELAC take that to heart and we're very proud of the work that's happening with first gen. Also, again, ELAC was recognized as first in the nation with the highest enrollment of Latina, Latino students. We were recognized by the Hispanic Outlook, again, the largest HSI in the United States. Also recognized by the Campaign for College Opportunity for ADTs with thirteen hundred. We were one of three community colleges, I believe, mission also. I don't want to steal your thunder, Dr. Arnellas, but we were the two with an LACC to receive the award. We have several events. I think they're in the report, so I won't take too much more of your time with that. But we do have our mega events coming up for enrollment. We are going to have snow in Monterey Park. We're calling it the Arctic Chill. We expect about a thousand students to come in, register on the spot, similar to what we did during our summer kickback. And the goal is that all those students that show up that day will leave with their financial aid, their registration, everything they need to start their enrollment for the winter. And for the spring, we'll do the same at South Gate. We're anticipating again, over a thousand students and community members to come out. You're invited. Please join us if you're available. And again, thank you for your leadership and all the support you give all of our colleges. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. First, I'd like to thank Chancellor Rodriguez, trustee Hernandez, trustee Hoffman, and Board President Vella for attending our fiftieth anniversary gala last night. It was the first time we put one on since two thousand and ten. So it took us a while to plan this one. So we really appreciate you being there. A very short report. As you all know, credit for prior learning is becoming very important as we work through our workforce development issues. According to the report just released by the State Chancellor's Office, West Leeds all community colleges in the state with the most students updated into the new statewide pathways, articulated pathways, cloud-based repository. We have two hundred and eighty-six students who have been awarded over two thousand eight hundred and thirty-four units of CPL, which, credit for prior learning, which has resulted in a savings to the students of over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in tuition and fees to date. And we're continuing to refine that process in preparation for full implementation of the Student Center Funding Formula. Thank you.
Thank you. And for those that are online, it's my first gen proud shirt. So this is to commemorate everything that we're doing for all our first generation students and also for proud supporters. So I want to give kudos to my staff, our Harvard advantage team that put the event together today. We had one of our first gen events. Our keynote speaker was one of our professors, Professor Sun Nguyen, which gave an amazing presentation on his background. And so we're excited. Next week, we have a second one that's going to be comprised of first gen students, a panel of students. So if you guys are interested to join us, we have sent you guys the info. We'll send it again. Bruce, I just want to let you know that we just hired a supervisor.
Yes.
At Harvard College, because our facilities teams are the ones that are at the beginning and they're at the end. And we really appreciate that. So last Friday, we showed how much we appreciated them with some barbecue for them. They didn't have to do it. We brought it for them. So all they had to do is show up and eat it all. They did share a little with me because, you know, they have to share once in a while. No, but we're excited. To the board of trustees, I want to say thank you for giving us another tool in our toolbox to serve our community with the resolutions you guys just passed. This allows us to continue to work with our communities because we are from the community and our campuses belong to them. We're just stewards of those campuses while we're there. So Chancellor, our South Bay Forty-Niners are undefeated. Just saying. And then today we had the city, the L A Department of City Planning that visited us today. We had forty-five members of the city of L A touring Harvard College. We treated them with a world-class culinary arts program that we will be taking the world, the cup back on May tenth, twenty twenty-four. Next week, we'll be celebrating students. We're giving thirty-nine students a thousand dollars each. So I want to say thank you to the foundation for all the hard work that they do day in and day out. I challenged out to them last year that we wanted to give our scholarships twice a year, not once a year. And so they stepped up this year from moving it from five hundred to a thousand for the first one. So I'm hoping that we meet that one for this next one. Yes. And then to my colleagues, just remember that our basketball team is a defending South Coast Conference champs and we're ready to defend our title. So thank you, guys. And don't forget to thank them next week. Thank you.
Good afternoon, trustee chancellor. Lone Alliance of Athletics as well. So Trade Tech's basketball season has. Good afternoon, trustee chancellor, Lone Alliance of Athletics as well. Um, so Trade Tech's basketball season has started and the men are two and O. Um, so they're, you know, go Beavers. Um, the importance of athletics is so important. Maybe you think about cohorts, the success. Um, we, all studies show that that has really changed students' lives. So it's great to see um the, the work that happens in athletics across the district. Um, I also wanted to share, um, in October, we also hosted an annual university transfer day. Um, it was amazing. We had a number of about forty-six different universities and colleges show up and talk to our students about transfer. Um, so it was well received. Um, and the last thing I want to share invitation. So on November twenty-ninth, um invitation will go out to each of you. Um, Trade Tech will host the ribbon cutting for our new basic needs center. Um, so as you know, the basic needs is also one of those critical things that um all students need access to. So I will follow up with the invite for all of you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Chancellor. Um, well, at Pierce, we are today celebrating Veterans Day. We have a panel. Um, and we've also have a presentation of the flags that represent all of our military branches. So that's, that took place this afternoon. And um next week, uh we are thrilled to have um a special lecture uh by Vice President Mark Villasenor and he is um part of the Fernando Tatavian Band of Mission Indians who will be celebrating uh Native American Heritage Month. And I'm very excited that we have made the offer and the gentleman has accepted as our first Native American Studies instructor um for Pierce College. To, to implement our Native American Studies uh program and he is a fifty percent Navajo and fifty percent Sioux. So yes, we're very excited. So thank you.
Um, President Vela, President Vela, can I say something? You, you are, she was honored last night at the West L A Gala for being she's honored with the alumni role model award and had just a many students and family and friends and faculty and staff um supporting her. So congratulations on your award. It was such a lovely event.
And I was very, very impressed with your husband, by the way, who's a teacher at UCLA in dentistry and he was just so charming. And uh he actually taught one of my, uh my UCLA friends, um Solerick Mekian, who is now a dentist and she's actually a dentist of some of my family. So it was just your husband knew everyone.
Thank you. Will be UCLA on the clinic floor. So, so UCLA romance.
It was really nice seeing you there. All right. Doctor Griffin.
My key takeaway, UCLA, Pop Warner football, some important items. Um, couple of items just to acknowledge, we had on October twenty-fourth, an absolutely amazing Welcome Black H B C U caravan. I want to express gratitude for everyone who made it successful. Trustee Henderson, Dr. Smith, Dr. Coney, everyone, you know, provide amazing leadership and support for the twelve one. A couple of days later, we had our media arts showcase, which is always an amazing experience for our students to uh present their short films. If anyone ever has the opportunity to join that, please do. It really is a lot of fun. Uh, we're in the middle of our financial aid outreach activities. You all have heard about this uh from past presentations, but we're out there right now talking to every high school senior about how to pay for college. We were just at Sun Valley Magnet, uh Polly, and I'll be at Fulton with our financial aid outreach uh financial aid and outreach teams on Monday. So that's a really rewarding, rewarding experience. And the last thing I wanted to mention is tomorrow night at the South Bay Web, I will be receiving an award at Valley for our bus operator program and our manufacturing academy for their uh placement and jobs. The manufacturing academy actually had a hundred percent placement. So they continue to do amazing work. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Chancellor Rodriguez. Um, I want to start off by congratulating the L A College Mission family because this semester marks a historic enrollment time for us. We have enrolled more students than ever in the history of L A Mission College. Yes, we bet we're up to twelve thousand nine hundred students in headcount. So that's a historic marker for us and again, want to really congratulate uh the Mission College family for all their efforts. Um, I'm really excited to share that L A C C D is leading a discussion to serve um justice impacted youth and we have brought together uh several leaders in the community, including the D A's office, the public defender's office, uh L A County probation, Superior Court judges and ourselves to start an important conversation on developing an ecosystem in L A County to, to be part of the solution, to be part of the diversion. Um, to really, really impact the, the trajectory of our youth. So we started an important conversation at L A Mission College. Want to thank uh trustee Vettis, our chancellor, our president for joining us and more to come on that front. Um, also want to announce that we've opened up a coima. So just over, yes. Really excited. The majority of our classes started just over two weeks ago. Already we have enrolled almost three hundred students. Uh, so really excited about that. Thank you, Chancellor Rodriguez for visiting our site. Um, we also want to thank you all. We couldn't have done this without the support of the board, without uh Vice Chancellor Smith in his team, Vice Chancellor Lids in her team, our campus facilities, uh the leadership of Dr. Cantu. Lots of, lots of folks coming together for this heavy lift. Want to invite you, you'll get in a formal invitation, but our grand opening is scheduled for December nineteenth at the site. And our keynote will be Congressman Cardenas. Uh, that's, you might be wondering, why are you waiting so long? Well, we worked around the congressman's schedule, so we're excited to have him. Um, and then finally, yesterday we moved into our student services building. So yes, but lots, lots of planning to finally get us there. We started our move. It'll take us about two weeks to try to settle in with a grand opening scheduled for December fourth and you'll receive an invite for that as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Um, all right. We're going to go ahead now and move on to public comment. Um, Rolando Cuevas, please come up. You have three minutes.
Thank you, David. Thank you, David. But don't start yet. Hold on a second.
Okay, well, we have.
David, just, just real quick, before I start, like three minutes?
Three minutes.
Okay, no, before I start, I just want to say, I want to apologize to you and the Board of Trustees for the last time I was here, for you to fall language was inappropriate. But I got caught up in the moment of the emotions, what we're talking about, okay? So let's just forget about that. Let's focus on what's important and let's talk about this chancellor here. Okay, come talking about this contract and that's fair grounds here. McKeever, Angela, you said it right. McKeever, you're absolutely right. With that board and you guys should not look away because you're scared because basically what they said, that man should be fired today. That's basically what he said. I'm talking to his contract and why he should be fired, right? Because you don't deserve it. Francisco, don't stare at me like you're scary because you don't scare me, okay? You really don't. You're pathetic. Anyhow, his enrollment is down, David. Twenty-two thousand F T S. Okay, twenty-two thousand F T S. I wonder how you're going to make that up? When McKeever talked about that forty percent cut at trade, at Michigan, at Trade Tech, that's just the beginning, guys. That's just the beginning was coming. You guys better start speaking up to the union for backup so that you guys don't get fired at his expense. Okay, because McKeever, you're going to get cut whether you like it or not because there's no money. And they're going to give him a raise of three, four-year contract. You know, David, Gabriel's not here today. It would, it would be honorable of you as his friend who was very critical in your career to get you elected that we don't vote on this contract today and that we wait till he's here so that it reflects the record appropriately. That it will be a six-one rec, a six-one vote. It should really be a seven-oh vote for him to get fired. Okay, everything that happened with everything McKeever and Angela said, if he was doing his job, we would not have been losing ten million dollars, David. That's ten million dollars. Classrooms, they're going to cut forty percent, twenty percent? Well, how are they going to cover the ten million? What, what lie, Francisco? What lie? Like they said, you know, but let me read my statement real quick. How much time do I have, Lupe? How much time do I have? Five. Okay, time out. Okay. Let me finish, David. Okay, here it goes. As a board, you owed a fiduciary duty to the faculty, students and community. You have the power to put these people in position and give them the power to turn our schools into a cesspool of theft, dishonesty and crime. You gave the chance and the power to put these people into those positions. He knew that you would not take action against him. He's laughing at you now because the joke's on the Board of Trustees. He can do whatever he wants. It's time for you to step up and take the power away from him by putting him on administrative leave or firing him A S A P. It has to stop all the lawsuits costing the districts millions of dollars and bad press. Like I told you the last time, the L A temple was going to write that article and they did. Okay, today you have the opportunity to correct the chancellor's wrong by postponing his contract and to Gabriel Bonas is back here at the next meeting or put him on administrative leave or fire him. It kills me as a former student leader and alum from East L A College to see this district become such a cesspool. And the board members, you can rise to be in the right set of justice today. Okay? I am calling on the board and demand that the chancellor does not try to fire anybody in retaliation because he's known to do that because he's cowardly. Okay, I only say that because the last time a senior manager correctly corrected him in public, he fired that person. Finally, my major gripe, David, I just wanted to do this. Okay, yeah, real quick. How can any president in this district hire a secretary and make them deans? What's the purpose of having job classifications of four years, four years of management and all this and these secretary? I have nothing against the secretary if they have the full qualifications, but that's a joke and an insult to everybody in the administrative levels trying to climb up where this secretary is are flying up. And that's the chancellor not talking to his people. Another reason why he should be fired. If I was a trustee, he, I would have walked them out of my shoulder and put them on the curve. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
All right, thank you. Um, do we have any more on regular agenda items, Lupe? Anyone online? Nope. Okay, let's go ahead and move to reports from the board. Trustee Vettis, please summarize the proceedings of the Facilities Master Planning and Overset Committee you chaired on October eighteen.
One second, trustee.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Um, maybe Mike can read close glasses here. Um, uh, the facility uh Master Planning Committee um had two members present, Sir Hernandez and myself. Um, we reviewed several informational items. Uh, the first was um some of the background on the L A C C D housing forum and uh some of the next steps beyond that, including um uh what will take place long term and what's going to be talked about. There's some summary provided by uh some of the uh housing discussions that have been taking place at various campuses as well. Um, the committee received um a presentation. It's essentially a training for the committee on the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. Um, General Counsel and Mr. Holloway uh are outside counsel, provided basic procedures, how it works with facility master plans and updates and essentially the trigger points uh for, for CEQA. The district um is very clear with the, its interest in, in um CEQA compliance and all the things we do to make sure uh we're in place there. Um, we also had a partner presentation um with essentially mandatory real estate due diligence procedures and the relative, uh, the related statutory provisions. Um, some of this is, is in response to the challenges I think we've had over the last several months of, of, of dealing with short-term leases, long-term leases. And so uh, so I would encourage um all the board members, if they're interested. There's really great presentations that our staff put up on PowerPoint that are part of the packet available uh for everybody. If they wanted to have a little bit more understanding of what CEQA uh is and how it works and what our real estate due diligence uh is and, and how it works as well. And so um, so wanted to make sure the committee itself um uh was as fully versed and up to date on, on those processes. We did um request um uh some clarifications from our staff to see if there's a different approach to short-term leases as opposed to long-term um leases or, or acquisitions in the process. So we'll wait to get further feedback on that and if there's any other actions to go forward, uh we'll form the full board. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Vettis. Trustee Hoffman, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Budget and Finance Committee that you chaired on October eighteen?
Uh, yes, thank you. We um approved uh the syndicates and authorized the issuance of uh four hundred million dollars in Measure C C bonds and a hundred and seventy-five million dollars in Measure J bonds. They are under item. Um, there are two resolutions for your consideration and hopefully approval today under item D D recommendations from the chancellor and we'll have more of an opportunity to um see who the syndicates are and ask questions when we get to the item. Um, we also, uh, Mr. Blanchard, in one of his last duties um as our internal auditor, uh, went over the internal audit quarterly report for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. We had an enrollment update um and a presentation um by Maury Pearl and we did a five-year and we had um opportunity to ask questions. Uh, financial analysis, looking at the next five years in um enrollment growth and where we think we're going to be. And then we also had an information item um for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three annual financial and budget report. And that is my report. And I look forward to your support when we get to items D D.
Absolutely. No, thank you for all your hard work and I know next, uh, what is it? Next week, what will be your last budget committee meeting, right?
Oh, that, thank you for reminding me. Next week, we do not have a budget committee meeting. We're having a special meeting on November twenty-ninth because we will be bringing something forward, the December thirteenth board meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is trustee Eno. Please summarize the proceedings of the Legislative and Public Affairs Committee that you chaired.
Yes, I am happy to report. We survived and accomplished a lot in one full um legislative cycle. So that is wonderful. Um, I want to thank the chancellor, uh Maria and you, President Vela, for um appointing me in this position. I learned a lot and it was really rewarding. Um, we successfully passed three, uh, two assembly bills and a senate bill. Um, all signed and moving forward, the E L A C one seven, S B seven fifteen. But there were, they will get a small business um center. We um passed, as we mentioned earlier, with the resolution, um A B eleven fifty-one under um Assembly Member McKinner and under um our leadership here. And then also um A B ten ninety-six. Um, which um trustee Bona really championed and um it's a huge accomplishment. And so I just wanted to um acknowledge trustee Bona and his vigilance and um, sorry, a little sad here, but I think a lot of the purpose and a lot of his mission were driven by his daughters and his wife. And so the passion that he really um pushed through to accomplishment, I accomplished all of this. I want to acknowledge him and his family um for all of this. But basically that is all. And just so you know, we did close our proposals for this upcoming year. Um, it sounds like there will be some challenges to really get some things um through the assembly this year and federally. So we do have to be a little bit more, I guess, conscientious of how we navigate things, but I think proposing ideas for the future is always a great thing. So we're open to ideas. Um, and hopefully we can be as successful as we were this past year. That's it.
Thank you so much. A lot of good work. Um, next is student trustee Henderson. Can you please summarize the proceedings of the Institutional Effectiveness and Student Services, sorry, Success Committee that you chaired on eighteenth April? It's a long, it's a long.
It is. It is. I'll be student trustee. On October eighteenth, um, the I S S committee met. We had um, we had a presentation by East L A College. Uh, President Ramon's team presented the um college's mission statement, which was unanimously uh recommended by the committee to be moved forward uh to the full board. We also received presentations on the District-wide Transfer Partnership Program with UCLA, um which since its inception in twenty nineteen is on its way to serving nearly one thousand students. which since its inception in 2019, is on its way to serving nearly 1,000 students over the next 12 months. The program will be continuously monitored to ensure that our transfer numbers are being sustained. We were also informed on instructional modality and successful course completion, which was a reporting of how students are faring academically based on modality of instruction and comparing enrollments based on the modalities offered in each class by enrollment and sort of a comparison since fall of 2020. And we were given our enrollment update showing continued increases in enrollments across the district in regular enrollments and in dual enrollment. So kudos, kudos to the staff and faculty and administrators at each of our colleges for setting goals and successfully implementing their respective plans. Keep up the great work. And on our upcoming agenda items, we have, we'll be getting a reporting on credit course offerings in our in-language course offerings and statistics on class modality based on student interest. That's important because as we move forward to the next two to three years regarding home, hold harmless, increase in our student enrollment will be, and the next ISS meeting is actually next Wednesday at 2:30. That ends my report.
Thank you so much. Yes, this is Vice President.
Sorry, I also forgot to mention a huge $30 million $30 million grant for the LGBTQ plus community. And President Vella really championed that. And not only does $30 million go to the entire community college state, but originally, we were kind of getting short, short on the money allocated to the LACC D district, but because of your advocacy, we were able to champion $500,000. So that is huge. So, yeah, so thank you. Thank you for that one.
Really nice. All right. Next is student trustee Cordova. Please summarize the proceedings of the Student Affairs Committee you chaired on October 13.
On October 13, we discussed the Everbridge app that I shared with you guys at the last board meeting. And I believe it is now going to be piloted to the, to all nine campuses. So it'll be really great just to keep everyone in alert for safety reasons. And we also spoke regarding the Fast Fill Simplification Act that will start, I believe, this upcoming December for the new fast fill applications that are coming in. I just urge all college presidents to work hard with their financial aid departments because even now in the fall semester, we're seeing some issues and some holes on disbursements and yeah, so we just want to make sure that students are receiving their money on time and that hopefully with the new simplification act is actually simplifying the application and not making it more difficult for students to receive aid. So, yeah. The third item that we spoke on was again in relation to the promotion for food and clothing drive. Pierce shared with us that they will be hosting events and instead of paying for a ticket and admission, they can bring in like an item to donate so that we can fulfill our pantry inventories for both our clothes and food. And great to hear that Southwest got the $5,000 donation. Love that. And four, we did speak in regards to student housing and just encouraging the ASG and the SAC members to open their voice up as this is a critical topic that I think we should all be involved in. And so those were the four items that we spoke on. On October 20th, we held the Student Leadership Institute event at trade. So it was really great to see the Chancellor there and just how all the ASG members collaborate and just it was great to see them there because I can't really do much here at the board unless I have full communication with them. So it was just great to bond and build with them. Yeah. And so for future plans in relation again to the financial aid, as a financial aid student, I see a lot of students that come in that are housing insecure and that they don't currently possess some type of phone or tablet device. So really, it makes it difficult for them to even do the application because as you guys know, everything is like internet now. So without that, it's really complicated. So I proposed to trustee Hernandez and to my advisor, if we could work with the Department of Public Social Services to hopefully have them come to our campuses and disperse free phones because if you're currently receiving government assistance, you qualify anyways. But unless you actually go to a DPS S office, you can't receive it. So hopefully they can come out to our schools just to make it easier for those who are in need of a phone. So on November 15th, sorry. On November 15, I know that CalFresh is meeting with our basic needs coordinators. So I hope to attend that meeting and propose the idea there. So great to have everyone's support on that. Thank you.
Can I say something? So I also want to acknowledge Alexi. She and I were asked by the Student Center for California Community Colleges to do a presentation at their advocacy academy in December. It's the first weekend in December. And the title of our session is navigating the boardroom, a student's guide to effective advocacy. And we're doing that in partnership with Nune Guripian, who is a legislative advocate with the league, but was also student trustee at Pasadena City College and transferred to Yale. And she's quite a good advocate and so out with the student senate. And so really excited and glad that they asked you to participate. So thank you.
And thank you for your support in that too. And thank you, Guadalupe, for the help in the registrations. I can't wait for that event.
President Vella, can I make one comment? Student trustee, I got to say this. I think I've been on the board of more than 10 years. This is the first time I've seen a student don their gear. And it looks awesome because I could see it on the, on the screen. So I wanted to give you a thumbs up and kudos for, for donning the yellow, the cub wear there.
Thank you. And I would like to rep the other schools too because you know, I'm for all, all campuses. So let me know if you guys have merch for me.
Trustee, when is your next second meeting?
Our next meeting is on November 17th. We had to move it due to some discrepancies. But yeah, you guys are all welcome to come. It's from 9:30, of course, to 1:00 usually.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, trustee Hernandez, can you please summarize the proceedings of the Student Basic Needs Ad-Hoc Committee that you chaired on October 13?
Yeah. So at this committee meeting, we discussed operations, maintenance, and service costs for successful, supportive, affordable student housing. As we heard from the housing summit that we held, you know, there's a lot of need for not just housing, but supportive services that surround that, that housing. We know that outcomes for students are stronger when there, when there's housing that's responsive to residents' needs and when housing provides opportunities to build community and cultivate a sense of belonging. That being said, you know, in order to be able to fund the operations and maintenance of a student housing project that offers all those services, those projects really need to pencil out. We need to identify, you know, what services that students really want. And then we need to figure out how to fund them. And there's always, you know, when you look at affordable housing across the country right now, we have money to build projects, but operating and maintaining them is what's really the devil in the details. And so with the ad hoc committee, we, I think we're diving into that work using the pilot program that we already have around student housing to identify what supportive services students want and need. And then really think, I think in the next few months, thoughtfully about how we can advise our facilities folks and our larger community on how to make that happen at some of our sites. So really excited about that. We did some planning about the student housing summit that already happened. And we'll probably continue on that work in the next few months. And the next meeting is December 1st. We had to rejigger things a little bit because of Veterans Day. So that will be the next meeting, December 1st at 9:00 AM.
Thank you so much. Trustee Hoffman, do you have any updates as board president of the California Community College Trustees?
Thank you. I don't have any updates other than we, our next board meeting will be with, in conjunction with the annual convention, which is taking place November 16th through 18th. So next week, where we will have a joint board meeting with the CEO board. And then I've also been participating with the state chancellor in getting the word out about Vision 2030. I recently had the privilege and pleasure to go to Santa Ana College, where our former colleague Marvin Martinez is the chancellor in the Rancho Santiago Community College District. And the topic for presentation was on apprenticeships. And so as many of you know, the governor signed an executive order to really ramp up apprenticeships with community colleges chancellor. You and I were at a meeting at Pasadena City College also with the LARC. And I think we have 100,000 students that participate in registered apprenticeships right now, and the goal is a half a million, 500,000. So there's work to be done there. And I'm honored to be able to you know, go around the state and advocate. So thank you. And we, we'll, we'll see all of you at the annual convention. And I know also doing a presentation, I'm doing a presentation with Valley Mission and Pierce on dual enrollment. So thanks.
Yeah, great. And I'm really happy that that got chosen. I think that's going to be great. All right. Next, we're going to go ahead and authorize board travel. May I have a motion on a second?
Trustee, I'm sorry. I had a couple, an addition and a change that I discussed with trustee Hernandez now. For the Energy Career Pathway Summit, I was also invited to be a speaker there. So I wanted to add myself to it. I'm sorry, I only started with the Chancellor, didn't process all the way through. But we don't have another meeting before it takes place. I wanted to see if I can add my name to that. And then in conferring with trustee Hernandez, it might be the, the actual event itself is the sixth through the eighth. And so as opposed to just the seventh, I wanted to just be clear with the, if we can make the change to six through the eight, I think my session is still being determined versus I think the one that she's in is settled. So we can make the changes six to the eight to provide us flexibility if they do move us around and then just add my name to them. That's okay.
Okay. You have a motion on a second on item G2 with trustee Vedas amendments. Moved by Henderson. Seconded by trustee Hernandez. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes. Okay. Next is resolutions. Let's start with H1, Veterans Day, National Veterans and Military Families Month, and National Veterans Awareness Week. May I have a motion on second on item H1?
So moved.
Moved by Eno, seconded by Vedas. Any discussion from board members?
No.
For all of our military veterans, thank you for your service. Thank you. Thank you.
Trustee Eno?
That was it. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes. Okay. Next is item H2, National Native American Heritage Month and Indigenous Peoples' Day. May I have a motion and second on item H2? Moved by Henderson.
Yeah.
Seconded by Eno. Any discussion? Any comments?
I think it's just wonderful to hear that we have a, a full-time faculty member that's going to be able to teach in our Native American program. So thank you.
Fantastic. All right. Hearing none. Let's go ahead and do roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes. Okay. Resolution passes. Resolution H3, Runaway and Homeless Youth Prevention Month, National Homeless Youth Awareness Month, and National Runaway Prevention Month. May I have a motion on second on item H3? Moved by Henderson.
Again.
Seconded by Eno. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes. Okay, resolution passes. Next is item H4, National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. May I have a motion on second on H4? Moved by Henderson.
Again.
Seconded by Eno. Any discussions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next is item H6, Reappointment of a Personnel Commissioner. May I have a motion on second on item H6? Moved by Henderson.
Second.
Seconded by Eno. Any discussion? Any comments?
Is, is the commissioner, is she here today?
Is our commissioner here today? It's a reappointment.
Okay, that would have been, that would have been nice to hear just a couple words. Okay, thank you.
And we want to thank again Ms. Singer. All right, let's go ahead and roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Vedas?
All right. Did the Chancellor take a break or where did he go?
So I'm going to take a break too.
Okay, let's go ahead. We'll table item I1, which is just his report, and we'll move to the committee of the whole. Let's go ahead and start the committee of the whole. Where are you? All right. So when now we assist the committee of the whole, I am transferring the gavel to Vice President Henderson to lead us in the next session. All right. Here you go. It's okay. Just roll.
Lupe, Crystal, can we get a roll call, please?
Trustee Henderson?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman? Absent. Trustee Eno?
Here.
Trustee Vella? Trustee Vedas? Student trustee Cordova, here.
Thank you, Lupe. Do we have anyone that's signed up for public?
No, ma'am. Nobody signed in.
So joining us today is LACC D's general counsel, Mayor Bell Medina, to lead us in the Brown Act training. General Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice President Henderson. Good afternoon, trustees, chancellor. Thank you for the opportunity to give this very, very brief training on the Brown Act, but very important. Okay. All the complicated stuff like moving this stuff. Okay. So the California Brown Act is codified in the government code. It is, the policy is in government code 54950. And it states, in enacting this chapter, the legislature finds and declares that the public commissions, boards, and councils and other public agencies in this state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and their deliberations be conducted openly. So the main purpose of the Brown Act is to ensure that the people's business is done openly so the people can participate. The Brown Act applies to legislative bodies. The legislative body is defined as the governing body of any local agency or any commission or any other sub-body that's created by formal action, whether by resolution, ordinance, or other formal action. It also applies, the Brown Act also applies to standing committees of a legislative body, whether or not it is comprised of the entire body, as long as the standing committee has continuing subject matter jurisdiction or a meeting scheduled that's fixed by charter ordinance or by formal action. There is an exception, and that is, for example, the ad hoc committees that the board does put together so long as the ad hoc committees are only comprised of the members of this body. So say, for example, one of the ad hoc committee wanted to have members either of Valley USD or the city council also serve on that body. It would no longer fall under the exception and would have to comply with all of the requirements of the Brown Act. The Brown Act is also in the education code and applies to any auxiliary organization. So our foundations are also subject to the Brown Act. The student organizations are subject to the Brown Act, our academic senate, faculty, councils are also subject to the Brown Act. And the Brown Act applies to a body when it is, when it's in a meeting. And what is a meeting? So the elements back in the day when I started practicing in this area of law 30 years ago was a little easier because it was a congregation of, of a majority of the, of the board at the same time, same place to hear, discuss, or deliberate on any item within the body's subject matter jurisdiction. So for this board, for example, that deals with a whole host of issues, subject matter jurisdiction is pretty much anything other than maybe the presidential election or something like that. So if it falls within the subject matter jurisdiction and there is a discussion or a deliberation, and the statute specifically includes the word here. So if So, if there is a majority and someone says, "Well, only one person was talking and the rest of us were just listening," it would still constitute a meeting. So, there are certain exceptions. Individual contacts, so less than a majority, it's not considered a meeting. Conferences that the full board may attend are not considered a meeting. But there is the caveat in the statutory language that a majority of the board should not be congregating to discuss business. And we'll talk a little bit about some other problematic ways that there could occur in Brown Act violation. There is also the exception of any open community meeting, any meeting of another agency, any meeting of another body. So, the city council or any other body that the majority of the board members would like to attend their meeting. And the exception applies because for those public entities, they generally comply with the Brown Act and they've already posted their own agenda. Social and ceremonial events are also exempt as not constituting meetings. So, if there is a meeting, one of the big problems is ensuring that there is, to avoid a potential serial meeting. And a serial meeting can occur in a couple of different ways. It occurs with direct communication with the majority of the board members to discuss an item within the subject matter jurisdiction and to reach a collective concurrence. So, if there is a meeting or conversation that occurs that says, "Are you gonna vote yes on this contract? Are you gonna vote yes on this matter? Are you gonna vote no on this matter?" That is developing a collective concurrence outside of a duly noticed meeting. And again, it goes back to the intent of the Brown Act, which is to conduct the people's business in an open session, in an open setting. So, the types of ways that illegal meetings can occur are through either the hub and spoke. That is, one person goes around and says, you know, with the majority of the board members, "Are you willing to approve this?" Or can I count on your no vote or whatever the case may be? Or it could be a daisy chain, which is two individuals will reach a collective concurrence. They'll notify other two individuals and then you have a majority of the board reaching a collective concurrence. These potential serial meetings could also happen inadvertently by staff briefings. So, staff briefings should be informational. They should not include a comment of, you know, so-and-so will be voting no, or, you know, we already have three people, three trustees that say they're gonna vote yes on whatever the case may be. So, it has to be informational and not the sharing of the votes by the other trustees. One of the important aspects of the Brown Act is the posted agenda. And the importance of that is to ensure that members of the community know what the body is going to discuss. So, generally, the agenda for a regular meeting has to be posted at minimum seventy-two hours before the meeting and has to describe with some level of specificity the item that's gonna be transacted. And the cases that have dealt with this case indicate that it can't be mere clues. People have to understand what the body is actually going to take up. As you, as we all know, there is a requirement for public comment. You have two different types of public comment. You have one comment that involves any item that is gonna be transacted. As trustee Hoffman pointed out earlier, the public comment on any item that will be acted upon at this board meeting has to happen before the vote is taken. So, you did that properly just a few minutes ago. And then you have a second public comment, which is any item that's not on the agenda but still falls within your subject matter jurisdiction. So, generally, if an item is not on the agenda, it cannot be discussed and it cannot be acted upon. There is a limited exception, and that is if an item came to the agency's attention after the agenda was posted and there is a need to take action before the next meeting and two-thirds of the vote of the board vote to approve it, you can add the item. Now, the item coming to the agency's attention after the agenda is posted doesn't mean somebody forgot to notify the board or somebody forgot to notify Lupe. It means that there was no information related to that, to that item before the agenda was posted. And there is a requirement now that the agenda be posted on the website. If it is, if the entity is a public body and the officials receive compensation. For special meetings, the time period for posting is only twenty-four hours. Public comment on special meetings may be limited to the items that are on the agenda. You don't necessarily require a general public comment for special meetings. The Brown Act also provides for emergency meetings, but emergency meetings are defined as work stop or some other severe public health issue, safety issue. In that instance, the entity is not required to post the agenda, but you are required to notify any newspaper that has requested to be notified by telephone at least an hour before the meeting and closed sessions cannot take place in emergency meetings. One of the other important aspects of the Brown Act that sometimes I think is forgotten is the need to ensure that any documents that are relied upon by the governing body in open session be made available to the public. So, if a majority of the board members are receiving any memo or any other document, the public is legally entitled to have that document. The way the statutory language is written here is that if the document is given at seventy-two hours before the meeting, then less than seventy-two hours before the meeting, the document can be made available, say, for example, in the boardroom. The easiest way to comply with this provision is if there is gonna be a memo that's gonna be given to the majority of the board. If there's a contract that's given to the majority of the board, it should be a link in the posted agenda. And that ensures compliance with the Brown Act mandates. Now, we've all learned to become accustomed to this new post-COVID meeting requirements. Assembly Bill twenty-four forty-nine was passed and signed into law earlier this year, in January of this year. And it requires now that a majority of the, that the board members actually attend the meetings in person. This was the legislature's attempt to make sure that the public officials are actually being responsive to the communities that they serve. So, a majority of the board members have to be present in the same location. The location must be open to the public and members of the public must be given an opportunity to participate. There is, there are two ways that a board member is allowed to participate via Zoom. Actually, there's three. We'll talk about two related to AB twenty-four forty-nine. The board member has to demonstrate or the public official has to demonstrate just cause, which in the government code is defined as either caregiving or childcare needs or the individual has a contagious illness. So, if the individual is just sick, that's, that wouldn't qualify for this particular exception from being physically present. It has to be a contagious illness or there is a need for a physical or mental disability. And that basically means if an elected official for some reason qualifies for ADA, reasonable accommodations of public entity, has to comply with that. The fourth way to do, to comply with this is if there, if the individual is traveling on official district business. There is also an emergency circumstance, which means if there is a physical or family medical emergency that would prevent the individual from attending the meeting in person, that would qualify as an exception. There is a limit in the statute, in the new statutory language. It's, there's a limit to three consecutive months or twenty percent of the regular meetings within a calendar year. So, pre-COVID, there was the teleconferencing provisions of the Brown Act. They were a little more liberal. So, majority of the board members could still hold a meeting so long as they were within the jurisdiction. This would mean that each one of the trustees here could have participated in a meeting from one of the colleges and that would be compliant with the Brown Act. The notice requirement, when we still, we still utilize this, so you'll see it in our agenda when one of our trustees is traveling, usually on personal business, maybe on district business, and we post their location on the agenda. So, the place where they are at, we post the address. But it has to be an area that is open to the public. So, that means if someone wants to participate in the meeting, they cannot do it from, or if they do it from the privacy of their own home, they have to let the members of the public into their home. If they're at a hotel and they wanna do it from their room, we have to post the room number. So, generally, it's a lobby or some other public location if we are doing a teleconferencing participation. All the votes are by roll call and members of the public must be allowed to make a public comment from each location. And at each location, there is a need to have the posting of the agenda. So, generally, all of the people's business must be conducted in open session with very limited exceptions. And those are called the closed session exceptions. The government code includes what they call safe harbor language. So, you'll see, doesn't matter if you're dealing with the city, the county, school districts. Closed session items generally track the exact same language because if the public entity utilizes the safe harbor language, it is more defensible if there is an allegation of a Brown Act violation. We, you know, our board president announces what the issues are that are gonna be considered in closed session before we adjourn into closed session. And in some instances, after closed session, there could be reportable actions that are shared in the public forum when the board re-adjourns to open session. And what can be discussed? For real property, it's limited to price and terms. Generally, you have your agency negotiator. There is no, there generally tends to be no reportable action on real property negotiations until after the item, the deal is completed. And that's intended to ensure that the public entity is not at a disadvantage if they're saying, "Okay, we're we're giving our negotiator the ability to negotiate up to X dollar amount." So, the final transacted item is generally in an open session as a ratification or as an approval. Pending litigation can be, can be either existing litigation, well, generally existing litigation. And the closed session discussion is to receive advice from legal counsel or to seek advice from legal counsel. So, if a public entity is in closed session under pending litigation and an attorney is not in closed session, that is going to be a problem in terms of compliance with the, with the Brown Act. Again, here, there is no reportable action unless there is some settlement or the board is authorizing an appeal. There is also the threatened litigation. And if the board is going or the body is adjourning into closed session under threatened litigation, the Brown Act requires that the body articulate what are the existing facts or circumstances that would justify going into closed session. Here too, whether it's the actual litigation, pending litigation, threatened litigation, if an attorney is not in closed session advising the body, it would be difficult to defend that the action is being, the closed session is in compliance with the Brown Act. The personnel exception also allows the board to go into closed session to discuss the appointment, employment, or evaluation of performance, discipline, or dismissal of any employee. There is no need to have anyone else. The body can meet on their own or they can have someone. They can have someone there. There is one exception, and that is if the body, if the board is acting on charges that are filed against the employee, the employee has the right to request to have those charges heard in open session. They generally can make that request within twenty-four hours before the actual board meeting. One, just final, for personnel, one thing to remember, to note here is that the Brown Act is very clear on what discussions can be had in closed session on personnel. So, simply because something is embarrassing or is not sufficient to allow that conversation in closed session. Salary is also not, you cannot discuss actual salary in closed session or approved salary in closed session. Labor negotiations, you can negotiate again here. The key person would be your agency negotiator and salary compensation and all the benefits for your bargaining team. Public security, so if there is a threat of security, there is, the board can discuss that in closed session. In this exception, it could be legal counsel. It could be your security consultant. It could be the chief of police or any other law enforcement official that is advising the body. Student discipline, suspension, expulsion, or other action is also permitted to be discussed in closed session. Here too, the student, like an employee, that is hearing charges, has the right to have their issue discussed in an open session. And as we know, we generally come back out, take the vote in open session and not identify the student by their name, but use the student number. Now, if there is a violation of the Brown Act, there's generally two different potential types of violations. One is by the public entity itself. So, if the public entity does not post the item correctly or does not, or does not comply with the seventy-two hour, twenty-four hour time period or does not use the safe harbor language, there generally is a requirement before anyone can bring a lawsuit of what needs to be done. And we'll go through that in a minute. There is also the potential individual violation. So, the Brown Act applies to bodies. But when we talk about bodies and we talk about serial meeting, it means each, each public official is required to comply with the Brown Act. So, any intentional violation of the Brown Act can be prosecuted as a misdemeanor. And there is the possibility of fines or jail time. If there is a court order, for example, it was very public, published opinions, like the County of LA. There were concerns about what was being discussed in closed session. A court would order the body to record the discussions in closed session and make them, and make them available. So, some of the penalties are if there is action that is taken in violation of the Brown Act, they could, a court could invalidate the action. So, a contract can be deemed invalid if it was taken in violation of the Brown Act. Prior to bringing a lawsuit, there has to be a letter that's sent to the public entity. It's called a notice to cure and correct. So, it gives a public entity the ability to cure and correct. However, because this is a, it's a statutory scheme that is intended to protect the public's right to have access to information, the code requires that in order to cure properly any violation, the public entity has to acknowledge. It has to say, "This is our attempt to cure and correct." And it has thirty days to respond to any demand to cure and correct. If there is no response, it's deemed that the public entity will not be moving forward and a lawsuit can be filed. In the lawsuit, they can request injunctive relief. And that's, for example, if there is a continued practice of not allowing public comment, not providing public documents or any other practice, that's, that's an ongoing concern. Whoever prevails in any lawsuit is entitled to attorney's fees. And again, if there is a concern that the discussions in closed session are not staying within the parameters of the Brown Act or litigation matters are being discussed without attorneys in the room, the court can order recording and disclosure of confidential information. And that is very brief presentation. I can entertain any questions?
Trustee Henderson, I know you're chairing, so how do you wanna approach questions? I do have a couple of questions.
Thank you for the presentation. I do have one, I have a couple of questions. And so, thank you for acknowledging the fact that I knew the Brown Act earlier with the public comment. Whose responsibility, like, it's a lot to keep in our heads when we're actually in the middle of a meeting. I'm just like a little bit of a nerd when it comes to the Brown Act. So, do we, are you the parliamentarian or do we have a parliamentarian to, like, keep us on track when we slip up those kinds of things?
I am the parliamentarian. The process that Chair Villa and I use, which changes depending on who's chairing the board meeting, rather than interrupt the discussion, if there is gonna be a concern, I usually text- I usually text him and tell him, don't forget, we have to do this. In this instance, the public comment had, well, in all instances, the public comment takes place before you vote. So the conversation was just starting. There was still, there was still the opportunity to do that, but I am the parliamentarian.
Okay, and that's why I asked the question about voting. I know you guys are looking at me like you thought I was gonna, I don't know, and I apologize if I acted out of line. That's why I asked the question because when we took an action item out of order before we had public comment, I just wanted to be sure. And so I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so you normally have a procedure, and I did the same thing when I was president with Mr. Prieto. Okay. And can I say one more thing?
Yes.
Um, you mentioned something in your slides about the way trustees vote and not to discuss your vote in advance. I think it was something to that effect. We had a public speaker today who actually gave information or alluded to the fact that he knew how a particular board member was going to vote on a particular item, which was the chancellor's contract. Is that, I realize that the public has the opportunity to criticize any of us in our roles. That's, the public is allowed to do that. But would that have been an item that maybe, like, would you need, would someone need to draw the line there? Is that an area where someone should have interrupted and said, you can't talk about how you think a board member is going to vote?
Absolutely not. A public comment generally means that members of the public are legally entitled to make any comment within the jurisdiction. And so they can be supportive or they can oppose a particular issue. And regulating the context, content of their speeches is not allowed unless it is disrupting the meeting. What's a problem with the serial meeting? Because that is what we were talking about. I think in this, the example that you're giving, there was probably no surprise because that action took place during the October meeting. So that was public information, how everyone voted.
Right, I forgot about that.
So I don't think in that instance, but even here with the serial meeting. So the serial meetings are intent, prohibit developing a collective concurrence outside of a meeting among the board members. There's going to be, for example, if someone came up to trustee Hernandez and asked, are you supportive of student housing? Her response is going to be absolutely 100%, yes. And so as a public elected official, you have a legal right to have positions on whatever it is that you have a position on. That's different than developing a collective concurrence with your colleagues outside of the meeting. It may seem like a fine line, but you are absolutely allowed to say, I am not supportive of the following. And at the meeting, you do it in a public way, and there's not a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Hernandez?
No questions.
Trustee Vares?
Thank you, trustee Henderson. Yes, I have, let me see, I'm just going to give you three questions here. First is, is, we talked about the meetings covered by the Brown Act in their usual and consistent and sort of that becomes part of the agendizing process. When do meetings like ad hocs or agenda settings or things that are sort of, you know, more casual, when do, when do they or how do they not become subject to that? Because I think there's some, several of us obviously sit on ad hocs, several of us now we're doing reports. But when, when do we step into the line that all of a sudden becomes part of the Brown Act requirement?
So there, the statute is very clear. If it is a majority of the board members, it automatically will have, that body will automatically have to comply with the Brown Act regardless of whatever it is called. If it is less than a quorum, a majority of the body and the advisory committee or ad hoc committee is comprised exclusively of this body and does not have a standing meeting schedule, it does not have to comply with the Brown Act. But as soon as there's formal action by this board and you decide, say, for example, the ad hoc housing committee becomes a very formal, very structured process, and you decide you're going to meet every other Tuesday at 3 o'clock. Once you take formal action to set a meeting schedule, it has to comply with the Brown Act. So less than a quorum made up exclusively of one body and that does not have a meeting schedule would be considered ad hoc. That does not have to comply.
So anything that's informal or changes in its schedule and those kinds of things sort of stick in the category of not under the Brown Act.
Yes.
Agendizing reporting, okay. Just to be clear of that, because I know sometimes, and that could be the, like, we may have an ad hoc committee that's not meeting regularly, but maybe longstanding, for example. You know, in the past, there has been sort of a concern about if you're longstanding, long established, what does that mean? So, okay, thank you for the clarification. Secondly, you know, we have a lot of conversations in the closed session, and I know in the board's own rules, you know, I wanted to see if you could, for the record, talk about the difference between the attorney-client privilege and confidentiality, which is something that sometimes people think are interchangeable, but they may be different things. Our board rules use the standard of confidentiality. I think I've seen in this presentation a number of things that relate to privilege. But could you tell us the differences and where those come into at that?
So for purposes of the Brown Act, the closed session has a number of restrictions to try to ensure the confidentiality. So for example, there are restrictions on who can attend closed session. The, I think the most basic one is the attorney for your opposing party cannot attend closed session. Or you wouldn't have your bargaining partners in closed session during labor negotiations because closed session is intended to provide a public entity the same protection that an individual would have. So you should not have to discuss your litigation strategy in an open session. You should not have to discuss your employee's evaluation in an open session. And so there is the requirement that everything that is discussed in closed session must be kept confidential by the elected body and by any staff members. The, that, the confidentiality is taken so seriously that for purposes of employees, that could be a basis for termination. So an employee can be terminated for disclosing that. Obviously, for an elected official, there are constitutional protections for the elected official. So the way that you see public entities normally addressing disclosure of closed session confidential information is by adopting a censure motion or resolution in an open session saying, this person disclosed the following regarding this information. The attorney-client privilege, the attorney-client privilege is, it can come in a couple of different ways. When your lawyer is providing legal advice, saying, for example, here's where the district has exposure. That information should not be disclosed. It shouldn't be disclosed to opposing counsel, and it should not be disclosed at all. There is also attorney-client work product privileged information. So if a document is prepared in preparation of litigation or in preparation of providing legal advice, that work product should not be disclosed. The only way attorney-client information or work product information can be disclosed is if the board as a body votes to waive the privilege. So the governing board of the dist, for an attorney, the district is the client through its highest body, which is the board. So the board would have to waive the privilege, and they can only do so through a majority of the board members waving to, voting to waive that privilege.
In the event, and you predicted my third question, is when the privilege is relinquished here? In the case that there may be materials that are considered privileged that are in the public now, how does, clearly means if the board didn't take an official action, that somebody disclosed that in violation of the Brown Act and in violation of the privilege here? Is that the assumption to make?
It depends on the document. That could very well be the case. If it was a document that was disclosed or shared with the board at a closed session, and it was disclosed, that is a problem. If it is attorney-client privileged, it shouldn't be disclosed at all without a formal vote of the board. So that's correct. It should be maintained confidential.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. The SAC members and I have created like a group chat to just have more direct, like, less informal, like, communication. And my professor just told me to like be careful depending on what we speak on. But as, if we speak on matters that are happening on our campus versus where we stand on it, like, okay, I'm going to vote this, or then we are perfectly fine to like speak on the matters that are happening on our campuses and just kind of have that communication.
You need to be very careful because the definition of a congregation, of a majority of your body, is to hear, discuss, or deliberate. So if you are discussing in any way, any issue that's within your subject matter jurisdiction and the culture of the campus or issues that are of concern to the campus is an issue within your jurisdiction. So if you are deliberating, discussing, or just hearing, it could constitute a serial meeting. And the emails, text messages, those are vehicles that could easily lead to that because you do reply all. We, the chancellor and I utilize a practice where we do BCCs. So if we feel like there's something we need to communicate to a majority of the board member or the full board, by doing BCCs, they cannot respond. If they accidentally reply all, you do not inadvertently receive, you don't inadvertently violate the Brown Act. So I would caution, I would caution against that practice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, G C Medina, for the presentation. Next up, we'll have Dr. James Lancaster, who is the vice chancellor of Workforce and Economic Development to present on workforce education.
Thank you, board, for having me here today to allow me some time to present. Quite a bit to go, but I will get the high gear and move quickly. I promise not to be like the pig in Toy Story with the clicker, though I won't go that fast, but we'll try to get through this pretty quick. I do want to thank, before I get started, Maury Pearl and his team for actually helping to put some of the data together that's here to talk about workforce education. And one of the things I'm going to do is talk a little bit about the outcomes, some of the data there. I have, and I intersperse a few, I guess, samples of some of the programs that are out at the colleges. This is really a micro sample, so presidents just know. I mean, I can't include the entire catalog or I'd be here until past the holidays. So it's just a very few, so don't throw your water bottles at me because I didn't get everything in that you have. And then I'm going to, I'll conclude at the end with talking about some of the regional trends that we're seeing and are predicted as far as workforce and LMI in our region, in the county. So looking at the district's catalog, if we had a district catalog, CTE makes up 3,253 courses, which is about 62% of all the courses that are offered in the district. And that's 129 subject areas or 66%, two-thirds. But we actually have in the district total catalog that we're looking at. When you look at awards that we do, and this is going to be duplicated, so this is not success data. This is actually the number of awards, degrees, certificates, skill awards, non-credit certificates that we have, and they are going to be duplicated. So, you know, multiple colleges have a real estate certificate. So that, you know, if a real estate certificate's at four colleges, it's going to be counted four times in here. But you can see that certificates of achievement are largest area of actually awards that we have with 483 current certificates of achievement that we have. There used to be a little bit more of the skill awards. Those have been converted. So what used to be the non-transcribable skill award has been converted over, so to certificates of achievement recently. And so much less of the traditional non-transcripted skill award and more of the actual transcribed work that you're seeing there. And then just another way of looking at it, if you're looking at it by college, you can see that East has the most number of awards with 174, Southwest at 31. And this represents a look at credit and non-credit certificates as far as the number of CTE awards that are available at each of the institutions. Just another look at the data, same thing. You can see that in the gray there, that represents a certificate of achievement. So this is primarily the award that's done in CTE across all nine colleges. The majority of those are going to be certificates of achievement. And then we have some degrees, predominantly AS degrees, and then followed by the AA degree. As far as disciplines are concerned, we'll take a look across our district of the 30, the top 30 CTE disciplines based upon enrollments. Administration of Justice tops the list, and that includes when that part, the academies. So that includes the academies in that. If you were to collapse this a little bit more, this is actually what's called six-digit top code for those of you that are curriculum wonks. So this is looking at a six-digit look. If you were to collapse it, Business Administration would probably float to the top. When you start looking at Business Admin and Accounting and Real Estate and all those, that would likely be the larger group. But when you're looking at sort of pulled apart, Admin of Justice, Child Development, Early Childcare and Education, followed by Business, Info Tech, and so forth, those are our top enrollments across the district. We look at demographics. As far as CTE students, they're fairly closely aligned to the general credit student population. When we look at age, we're actually slightly overrepresented. Maybe not slightly, but we're actually overrepresented. When we look at CT students that are 35 to 54 years of age, we have 23% in the CT bracket that are in that age bracket. But, and regular credit students, just overall credit students, that's 13%. So significantly more of that 35 to 54-year-olds are actually in CTE. And then 55 and up, also slightly higher with 5% in CTE in that age group and only 3% in the general credit. Underrepresented are the younger groups. So our traditional age students, those that are less than 20, 27% in CTE versus the general population for credit at 35%. And 20 to 24-year-olds is 21% in CTE and 27% in the general. So the younger generation, not as much CTE. Older generations, a little bit more in the CTE. When we look at gender, fairly even. Males and females in CTE courses, 48% female, 49%, almost 50% male. Looking at ethnicity, our Hispanic population is slightly underrepresented in CT when compared to the general credit student population at 59% versus 62% in the general credit population. All others fairly close to being equal with the other, the CTE versus the general, around the same. When we look at apprenticeship, apprenticeship has already been mentioned as a critical thing. The chance, or the governor is looking at 500,000 apprentices over the next few years. And we currently have 80,000 registered here in our district. The primarily ones that show up are coded and it's, you know, the weird coding that we have as a SAM code A, which is an actual apprenticeship course. So we're showing pretty much the stuff that's at trade and then one program at ELAC here because a lot of our apprenticeship programs that we have that we've been doing are non-traditional, and they're not being coded exactly. So we don't quite show them up because they're coded on a different side. So, and I'll talk a little bit about those in a second and show you some examples. But they're not out here, but primarily the ones that we're collecting RSI for are the ones that are in the construction area and the trades, which, and also ELAC has. On the health occupations, one is showing up for the respiratory therapy program. And then this just represents the same thing. It's just showing a percentage of all of those apprenticeship courses that are actually registered as apprenticeship of the state as SAM code A that's there, it's the same thing. When we look at some other examples that are out there, so West LA actually has their dental assistant program. So this is what we consider to be a non-traditional apprenticeship. Is done that way, it's a one-year program that they do, and students move right into being able to take the registered dental licensure. They also have a community services program. So this is a fee-based program that they do, primarily done with the whibs, and it's funded by WIOA that gets these, their students ready for construction, pre-apprenticeship. And they work exclusively with the Department of Rehabilitation. And then LA City College has a new optician training program. They're actually in their second cohort. They're getting ready to complete their second cohort. They work exclusively with the Costco, Target, and LensCrafters. And they do 2,000 hours of paid apprenticeship work. And then there's 144 hours of classroom instruction. So those are some examples, some of the non-traditional stuff that we have happening. that we have happening uh in the district right now. Non-credits had done a great job of recovery, so just looking at the bulk ed enrollments that we have, that that subject uh that comes through, we've seen a nice, strong bounce since twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, coming out of the pandemic, uh really recovering over where we were pre-pandemic, so the adult ed folks have done a fantastic job. Uh, and as we're making it, you know, greater investment in full-time faculty, there's there's awesome work happening there. Uh, this is a continued area of growth uh that's being focused on primarily all in the vocational ed and the workforce development area, so a great job there by our adult ed folks uh who are are pushing that on the on the uh bulk ed side. Just some a a few cool examples that are out there on the non-credit side in workforce development, so ELAC, uh their Careers for a Cause is a eight-week, hundred-and-sixty-hour program, provides skills training, employment readiness, CPR and core exploration courses uh for their students, sort of a job readiness. They've also got a great partnership with the Mexican consulate uh where they do classes uh in in early childhood education prep, and they offer those in Spanish uh along with ESL uh in English. LA City College has a phlebotomy program that's done in non-credit, that's absolutely been doing well, it's an impacted program, it's done in conjunction with the Nursing Department. Harbor College has a bookkeeping, QuickBooks, this is actually use both for folks who want to actually enter into that area, but also folks that want to come back and get re-skilled or those that just need this for their business, so it really serves a lot of different areas uh as in the workforce development area at Harbor. Uh, Southwest College has their Forklift and Workplace Safety Program that they're uh working with the incarcerated formerly incarcerated individuals, uh and this program uh received uh recognition by the Regional Consortium uh really recently uh for innovation and collaboration. Missions been doing some work with nonprofit management and leadership and community enhancement. Uh, they offer this class for the first time this fall, I think it's gonna be at the Pacoima site uh as well, and they're looking to incorporate this into the entrepreneurship program that they have. And Trade Tech's got a great partnership with Metro uh for their rail program that they do there uh that's all done in non-credits, you know, all these courses are free uh that that get students ready for uh the rail industry and maintenance of rail vehicles. Looking at some of the outcomes, um we had good stability uh through the COVID, through the pandemic. Um, and when you look at the actual success rate of students, the course completion rate in CTE, you can see that the blue line there represents CT courses, and the uh orange line represents course completion rate across all courses, so CTE and CTE uh the students uh fare uh better uh as far as course completion uh at seventy-seven percent versus sixty-nine percent in uh twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. When we start looking at uh equity measures, there are relatively small equity gaps by gender. Uh, the males perform slightly better in CT courses, females uh a little less. So males performing above that 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 trend line of seventy-seven point six percent. When we look at age brackets, the older folks do a little bit better, so our fifty-five and up actually uh doing well above the line, eighty eighty-four point eight percent, eighty-five point five percent for that thirty-five to fifty-four percent. Where those are the groups that are overrepresented as far as uh their age in CTE, and then it drops out the twenty-five to thirty-four-year-olds about even uh with the rate, and then our younger folks uh slightly under uh that line of that seventy-seven point uh six percent. When we look at ethnicity, there's a little bit of a boo-boo there um uh as far as that should be that third line. Third graph should be black students, the fourth line Filipino, and the fifth line Hispanic. The largest equity gap is among our black students, and you can see there, like I said, it's the third line on the graph. And uh Hispanic students also performing slightly under uh the average for CTE successful course completion.
To clear your columns, black students.
Third, yes, apologize, third column, third column is black students, fourth column is Filipino, fifth column is Hispanic. Yeah, summarize that got moved in the pickup, I'm not sure what happened there. Third column, black, fourth column Filipino, fifth column Hispanic. Uh, looking at overall outcomes, uh as far as CT awards, the uh top line there uh in the blue is the total awards that are being offered, so it includes certificates, degrees, skill awards, skill certificates, and non-credit certificates. You can see that overall, we're increasing in awards across the district with really that the the largest number being that orange line, which is the certificates of achievement. Um, you will see that the skill certificates is dropping off, and that's once again because of the conversions, so those were being converted uh from skill certificates to certificates of achievement as the state changed the regulations on on how that was that was allowed. Non-credit uh certificates, you know, also uh beginning to move up as well, but a nice trend line there as far as completions across the board for CTE uh in our district. The top performers in in the district, uh Child Development is one of the largest uh awardees of of uh degrees, followed by Registered Nursing, and then Admin of Justice and Business Administration following after that, those are some of the big ones for AA degrees. Certificates, Child Development also producing the largest number of of certificates of achievement, uh followed by the Police Academy, and then some more with Child Development, Preschool Age Care, Automotive Technology up there, and then Trade Tech makes the board at the bottom there with Cosmetology and Barbering. Uh, looking at credit skill certificates, Admin of Justice, so these are the ones that are non-transcriptible, Real Estate, these are often very short-term certificates, you know, six-unit certificates, Small and Quick Upskilling Culinary Arts, uh Children with Special Needs out of Child Development, another Child Development, Early Child Care, Architecture, and then Accounting round out some of the top lists for credit skill certificates. And then non-credit certificates, you have Child Development again, uh and then some of that job readiness uh that's there with job-seeking cha uh changing skills, Dentals in there, Community Healthcare Worker, Home Health Day, those are very popular uh non-credit programs in home health services, Electronics and Health Occupations in general. Uh, it's just some examples, some of the programs, you know, we have seven nursing programs uh in the district. Uh, the one at Harbor College has been around since nineteen sixty-three uh with strong partners with Kaiser, Harbor UCLA, Providence, Cedar Sinai, and several other hospitals at ELAC. Uh, they have an accelerated early childhood education program that actually helps students to get two of the transfer degrees in twenty-four months uh where they build that out and put that together uh in both early childhood education and child adolescent development. Pierce is a unique program, so it's not really duplicated across, but the Registered Veterinary Tech Program, one of them uh that's out there, uh these are unique, and of course, LA Trade Tech's um Barbering Program, which made the list of of in the top uh certificate awards, it's out there in the only one, so these are the only ones that are in our district, so they're unique programs. And at West Aviation, I was just there uh this week to visit their their lab and check this stuff out, very, very fun, very impressive out there. Uh, but this program provides um uh is aligned with the Federal Aviation Administration and provides uh airframe and power plant licensure. And of course, uh West is just awarded the BSN Avionics, it's been approved, and I believe they plan to start in spring of twenty twenty-five. Looking at the CTE outcomes or momentum points across the board, uh when you look at these, CT students don't tend to do as well as the regular non-CT students. As Maury and I sort of chatted about this, and and it's because they're they are not really in the transfer path necessarily, so when you look at this, you see all these momentum points, you're gonna see that CTE, whether full-time or part-time, it does not achieve, you know, completes transfer level math and English, may not transfer in three years, uh doesn't necessarily, you know, complete in three years because they may be doing skill building and other things, so they're not gonna have the same momentum level that you're gonna see across the board with non-CT students, and that exists for both uh full-time CTE and as well when you look at part-time CTE, it's really the same story that they're they're not, and those momentum points are not being doing the same as their peers that are non-CT. Uh, looking at the SCIF metrics, um the last data we have is for twenty-one, twenty-two, so we don't have the twenty-two, twenty-three data yet. But the we were looking at nine-plus units, students who actually completed nine-plus CTE units and students who uh achieved a living wage. Uh, in all these two metrics accounted for twenty-seven point eight million in success funding, which is about thirty-six percent of the total success funding um that was available, so these two, these two metrics, I anticipate that, you know, as we move forward, we'll see the next year's data will go up because, you know, we're really talking still about some pandemic levels here where it was tapering off, so we should see a a a kick-up here uh with the next year and and following go through. Uh, the CTE outcome survey, so this is a survey that's done by Santa Rosa College, it's done every year, the colleges actually get the data. Uh, it's interesting data to look at, um they do phone calls, um SMS surveys and email surveys of students. This cohort, the data that we're looking at here actually would have would have been a nineteen-twenty group, they would have not taken classes in twenty twenty-one, and they either uh they completed uh six or more units, they completed a degree or earned a certificate, so they earned a certificate, earned a degree, or completed nine units, I apologize for that. Uh, for us and in our district, uh they, we had fourteen thousand that were surveyed, but only but twenty-eight hundred responded. Uh, so it was a twenty percent response rate, so it was actually a pretty good response rate on our data that we got. And so if you look at this, you can see that um we're slightly below is employed in one job, slightly above at unemployed, and we have a much, we have a higher number of self-employed individuals that are coming out of our programs at ten point three percent as compared to the state average of eight point two percent looking at this. As far as the students, how much they're working, it's fairly close to the state average. Most of our students, sixty-eight percent are working forty-eight or are working forty hours a week. Uh, twenty-five percent of those that complete are working between twenty and thirty-nine hours a week, so we're we're fairly closer to the statewide average. Seventy-one point four percent of our students reported their job is very close or close to their program of study across the district. And as far as wage gain, those reporting that their jobs were very close or the program of study saw the largest wage gains. So we had and we had a six-dollar uh per hour difference between very close and not close, so looking at wage gain is how much they gained and actually, you know, doing the program, what was the end result when they finished that program, what wages saw. So those, of course, that had were very close to their degree, working in a field, saw much higher levels of wage gain, those that were not in a job that was closer to the degree didn't see nearly as much. Uh, in the area very close, we were, you know, two dollars and twenty-five cents shy of what the state average was. Something that we'll need to look into, sort of what what's what's going on with that part there as we move forward. Uh, but still some significant wage gains there across the board for students. There was actually, when you look at the what's we consider wages before schooling and wages after, it's an eight-dollar difference, so eight dollars uh with our district sort of on average before and after, when they entered in at seventeen dollars an hour, and then after schooling at twenty-five dollars an hour, so an eight-dollar gain uh for the students who uh completed. And then I think that this is probably one of the the ones that I'd like to see is that over ninety percent of our students were satisfied or very satisfied with the training received, and so that's kudos to the faculty in the programs, uh to those that are at the colleges, running the programs, putting it together, the industry partners, that of all those surveyed, ninety percent of them uh were very satisfied or satisfied, fifty-four percent saying they were very satisfied with the training they received, and we we did beat the state average on that one. Um, looking at some regional trends, uh moving forward, some of the LMI. So we are decreasing in population here in LA County. So we declined um by three point four percent uh from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, lost uh three hundred and forty-three thousand individuals. We're expected to decrease by another five point one percent over the next four to five years, losing additional half a million folks. Um, and all this data that I'm talking about now is from Lightcast. The population is shifting, hear quite a bit about this, so the areas in light blue there, when you look at that, you'll see that, you know, sixty to sixty-four-year-olds, sixty-five to sixty-nine, seventy to seventy-four, those populations are increasing in percentage, and all the other ones are decreasing in percentage in the county. A little bit different look, you can see everything in red there is all the ones that are gonna be decreasing, and all the ones that are still in black, and that second uh column from the right are all those areas that are gonna be increasing in in population. And so this is a, as far as workforce education with an overall decreasing population, and the population shifting, this becomes a critical need for us to make sure that we're focusing on those older adults as far as looking at where where we're where we're going with workforce. Because jobs are going up in LA County, so the jobs are predicted to go up, while while we have a prediction that we're gonna lose folks because of migration and so forth, they're actually predicting that jobs are gonna grow by another three hundred and twenty-five thousand over the next five years, so that inverse relationship is gonna require a workforce uh investment and uh lots of workforce development opportunity. Looking at some of the industries, healthcare continues to be one of our biggest. Uh, the the little dash there was where we probably should be if we were to norm it nationally, but you can see that we're much larger uh here, healthcare is what we considered a a regionally traded economy, so it's an export. So it's, it brings in actually wealth into the the region, so it's one of our strongest and largest is that healthcare and social assistance as over the side really being over what we should be as far as if we were to norm this on a national level. The top growing predicted is healthcare and social assistance, so that's another area we're looking at, is 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 that gonna continue to be the hot one, transportation, warehousing, and professional scientific and some of the STEM areas, and also information also predicted to be some of the top growing as far as industry jobs growth. Looking at industry utilities, uh it tends to be one of the ones that pays the highest, I know Trustee Hernandez is gonna be on a on a on a panel here soon to talk about that in December. Finance and insurance, management companies, information, once again, the STEM stuff, arts, entertainment, and recreation, which we all in our district have a lot of programming in, really across the board, we're in that space. Mining, not a not a big industry there, but it pays well, government manufacturing, real estate, and so forth uh that are there, so just some of the the ones that are that are the higher paying. When we look at business sizes, LA is a is a a region of small business. So eighty-five percent of LA's businesses have less than twenty employees. We have like point one percent have over five hundred, and I I the definition changes, but I believe that anything under five hundred employees is still considered small business, so we really, you know, most of LA is small, and most of LA is very small with eighty-five percent being having less than uh twenty employees, and so we're a region of small business, um and engaging that that population and that those small businesses is is critical. We look at the largest occupation in the region, uh Office and Administrative tops the list, so go fifteen, twenty-one A. Um, that's that's the biggest one in as far as the biggest occupation, slightly below the national average where it should be, and then so for sales, healthcare support up there on the top as well, transportation, food preparation, some of that service work is also up there, management, and then education actually is up there quite a bit on the list there, I think it's like the eighth one down, Chancellor talked about that today, really being that that LA is uh a a region of education and higher education. Healthcare supports, the top growing occupation projected, um along with some management, business financials, art design and entertainment also up there as being one that we are predicting to be that some of the top and fastest growing. And the, when you look at concentration, arts and entertainment, sports and media are the is the most concentrated as far as here uh in LA LA County, along with healthcare support being right behind that, and so what that means is the the one there in the graph represents what the national average would be. So anything that's that's higher than one means it's it's overly concentrated in that area for some particular reason, of course, you know, we're the entertainment capital, and so that's why, you know, we're two point five on that scale as far as concentration. Um, as far as LA County, that area is about four percent of all payroll, non-farm payroll is in that area, which if you look at it nationally, it's about twenty-two percent, I mean, so our our entertainment industry is twenty-two percent of the national payroll in that space, I mean, so it continues to be a a large area and an area of concentration. Most of our colleges have some programming in in that space. Has been quite a bit of job loss in that space with the strikes, about twelve thousand jobs being lost in motion picture and sound, and those will have to be worked to to be sort of be brought back uh as we move through that, but still a significant industry for us here. And then just to 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 talk about a program, so I was at I was at Valley College last week uh that visited their media arts department, but they're working on the next level of the program, so they're doing some advanced stuff in visual effects, visual production, and motion capture, that's that's pretty cool, and using some strong workforce funding for that. And then City College have been doing some dual enrollment stuff around the same thing with game art design and animation, uh partnering with Riot Games and Sega for game art design, they're actually at two high schools, doing this as a one-year program with a summer boot camp. Students actually go to a gaming conference, and then with animation, uh those students work through storyboarding, two-D production, and actually get certified TuneBoom certification, and that's a program working with Nickelodeon Animation, so some fun stuff there in that space. Uh, the top posted occupations real quick, healthcare, practitioners, and technical. Uh, we are undersupplying nurses in the region, we're about thirteen hundred short uh last year when you're looking at at nursing, so there is a critical need for that. Um, it's one of my soapbox issues, I talk about us needing to have the BSN in nursing. It should be, you know, we're, we can solve that. Don't want to sound like Trump, only I can solve, but, but. You know, it, it's something, an area where we can do it in order to solve that is, is for us to be able to offer that. I know that the CCLC is now going to take a stance on that. I'm starting to hear more and more folks talk about that. So that need for us to be able to offer BSNs based upon demand and not on duplication is, is really is the critical part. Because the last thing we want to do is just create something to sort of create something we really need to be answering labor market. And that's, that's the, the area right there that we need to be answering in this, in this space. Because it is the, one of the top posts and it continues to be, and we continue, we believe they call it, we're a nursing desert now in LA County. So not, not good. And then it's just reemphasizes this point. When you look at the bachelor's degree, so that, that dash line represents really the percentage of, of folks that have a bachelor's degree in LA County. And then the dark blue is, is really the jobs that require a bachelor's degree. So we are undersupplying the bachelor's degree in LA County. So even more of a, a, a need for us to be able to offer that degree. And as the, the nursing directors that I've talked to, as I visited some of the campuses, I've said, are you ready to do a BSN? And everyone says, yep, we're ready, let's do it. So let's make it happen. So definitely undersupplying in this space. And so there's, there's plenty of room for the community colleges to meet the demand necessary there. And, you know, this is just one example, at Mission College, I have the biotechnology degree. Certificate program where pretty much a hundred percent of their students were placed into full-time employment after that. And of course, now looping that into the bio manufacturing BS degree that's coming out of that. So kudos to them for, for getting that through and, and getting that approved. Closing this out, this sort of some areas of focus, of course apprenticeships are big, whether they're regular apprenticeships, non-traditional. Or even just work-based learning opportunities that are built in, those are critical for students. You know, I was a student that did work-based learning slash apprenticeship. So I can speak from, from experience on how awesome it is to be a part of that one that's built in. Older adults is critical for workforce and economic development in LA County if we're going to meet the, the, the need. We've got to engage that, that population. The Los Angeles Economic Workforce Development Department just started an older adult task force. And I'm actually been asked to sit on that. So they're working through that to try to figure out what needs, what we need to do to engage that. And they've got lots of folks that are involved in that to sort of come up with what's going to be the solution for pulling those folks and getting them trained, retrained, reskilled. And, and move back into the workforce. Non-credit adult ed, once again, large growth area, likely going to have to engage in that with the older adults, work-based learning. We now can do actually co-op now in, in non-credit. So there's a lot of opportunity there as we continue to scale that. And non-credit becomes that avenue that we use for some of the short-term vocational training. Credit for prior learning, there's some great work already happening. Wes talked about it, Jim talked about it. You know, Allison Tamira has been doing some work with the state, one of the deans at West. Great work there, particularly on the military articulation platform or the map. As we continue to work through that and, and expand on, you know, doing that assessment and analyzing that and getting students credit for the work that they've done outside. Alignment with industry is critical. Alignment inside of our own district with programming is critical. Alignment outside with that. And then last is student support. It's one of the things near and dear to my heart. Lots of CT occupations, there's hidden costs. And so, and unless you have the ability to pay for certifications and licensures and tools and equipment. The wages stay here. And so some of the real wage gain that you can see in some CT programs requires an additional investment. And so students that are already housing insecure, food insecure, and we're trying to move them into high-paying careers that require some of this larger investment on the back end in order to really realize those, those, those wages. That's the, some of the student support that, that I talk about is, you know, how do we do that? The state has made it available now that we can use strong workforce to pay for licensing certifications and exams. And so we're looking at how do we infuse that into some of the pathways? Because now that's legal, but we still can't buy tools and equipment and those kind of things to get people moving. But maybe eventually, so that's a, a, a critical area that I think as far as on the CT side for this real wage gain. And that's it. Questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Pastor Jim. So we'll allow the student trustee to start us off, start us off with questions.
For the workforce area, would it be appropriate to propose a potential, like maybe partnership with some of like the military recruitments that we have? Because as an individual who is thinking about my future and like how I want to like grow. I've, I didn't, and I'm also dealing with like housing insecurity, et cetera. I've been thinking about potentially doing that as a form of paying for my law school and things of that nature. And so I know that like, not, maybe not everybody will be like on board with that because people have their own like political preferences and stuff. But I think it would be cool as like the workforce department to maybe have that as an option as well. Because it does fulfill a lot of the issues that students deal with, like for example, housing and school and paying and all that. And I think like they just have so many amazing benefits. And so I don't know if that's something that you guys could potentially work down with down the line. I mean, it's not really a question, but.
No, it, it's, it's an employer. So it's, it's, it is workforce. So yeah, the military is an employer. So it is workforce. So I, I agree. Yeah, certainly.
Thank you for the presentation. Do you have questions related to like the sample size and things like that of the, the data you had? But I think that's probably for a later time. And then just the range of, you know, some of the certificate programs, what's the min units and the max units? Just so we can kind of get an idea of all the opportunities and options that students have.
And I, we can put something together.
Yeah, thank you.
Senator Bella, you have any questions?
No questions, just jobs, jobs, jobs. Just let's make sure that we, we shouldn't have workforce gaps with nine colleges. You know, in LA County. And, and I know it's tough. I actually am very impressed with all the colleges and what they're doing, filling those gaps. But, you know, more people of color in studios, you know, let the trades know, you know, we, we're seeing that. We want to make sure that, you know, the nepotism, you know, we, we want to make sure that we, we're aware of it. We know it's, you know, three, four generations of people working the cameras and all that. But our, our students deserve to be there in the construction world, you know? It's not just us doing the, the trades, but we can also do safety training and management and project management. And then nurses, I mean, you know, there's two hundred million coming down the pipeline. You know, again, I see the emphasis here. We, we should not, you know, we should be removing barriers from our students to be able to get nursing degrees. And, and I know we're doing our part, but the academic senate should also be listening to the needs, you know, repeatability. Students need to take classes five times to, to become a nurse, that's fine. You know, we shouldn't be so picky and elitist about it. Because after that pandemic, it wiped out. You know, I have family members that have mental health issues that can't go back because they were nurses and they saw people die in, in, in their arms. We really need to replenish our nursing pipeline. Other than that fantastic report, this was amazing. And thank you and all of the people for putting it together. Thank you.
Chancellor, did you have any questions?
Thank you. So a couple of points that I, and just curious to see what your assessment is now that you've had a chance to ground it all over the place. And I, I really do appreciate you posting some of those job specs that are up there. So, so two things, I know I got a chance to join the, the, the meeting that President Arnellis mentioned. With our, our, our DA and public defenders and our judges. A big topic of conversation was the short-term degrees and the listing of short-term degrees of what they lead to. But as a diversion perspective, I think it's amazing. But what I'm seeing is, and I'm trying to want to create a nexus and close the gap between the fact that we have literally what, a couple hundred thousand openings in LA County. I mean, there's an article, I think yesterday or two days ago, about City of Los Angeles having seven thousand alone. That are, you know, union jobs, good paying jobs, one in six positions are open. The city, it looks like that seems to be something that's repeated throughout the region. I think the state of California has something like four hundred thousand open positions posted. But how are we adapting what our programs are? I mean, do we actively assess the postings and then the, the open job postings to what our curriculum offerings are? Do we, is there somebody that helps moderate? You know, and, and I, I guess I want to say this, that, you know, we do this in our master plans. But those are five-year looks and five-year windows. And I think the expectation is that within the five years, we can sort of cover the trend as well as possible. But the fact of the matter is, I don't, I don't remember, and maybe this is just me new and paying attention now, to see this many open postings with unemployment being relatively low, considering all things.
Yeah.
But how, what's our gap? And how do we close that to make it feel like it's seamless? Where you can know that you do a certificate and it's a pathway immediately to a job, not a sort of wander forward? That you got a degree and go forth and there's a bunch of postings and a bunch of websites you can look at.
Yeah.
But how do we close that faster? And how do we make sure that whether it's a six-month degree certificate? Or, or whatever, that it equals essentially a job out the door?
So there's a, there's a couple of things there, trustee Veras. As, as far as like that closing that gap, so we, we can scrub job posting data. So we have the ability to, you know, look at an occupation and scrub all that and pull that out. And usually what that's used is that, at, at an advisory committee, you know, because all the colleges have advisory committees for all the programs. So they'll scrub that data out and they usually use that as a sort of a jumping off point with your advisory. It's just have it validated because some, you know, sometimes a job description has more than it needs to have. And so you're, you're trying to really narrow it down. When you're trying to build a program, the idea is to build a program that is going to get the student, you know, employed and have them be successfully employed. Oftentimes, business and industry, if you ask them, you want that? Oh yeah, we need that. You know, they'll have you do a five-year program because they'll want everything because it reduces their costs. And so you really have to have to be able to validate all the job postings. There's also in the job postings, is a lot of those postings are duplicative. So there'll be twelve different versions of that out there. And of course, some of the postings as well, like Google will fly a job posting because they're not intending on hiring unless you're like, you know, God themselves, right? Then they're like, that's who they're looking for. Because they're really, you know, they have no intention, but they're, it's out there. It's like a, they're fishing for something. So it's, it's not necessarily inactive, but if somebody was to apply, they'll pull them in. So you got to be really careful with the job posting data and sort of how we look at it and make sure that it's validated with the folks that are there. I, I will say this, as I, as I've been talking and sort of listening to students. We still have, you know, most of our students are first-generation students. And I talked about this today at the education summit a little bit. Just getting them to the campus is, is, is hard, right? Because they don't, they, they, I don't belong, right? I don't belong. And then having them go through a training program and say, okay, now go and get a job. Well, that's even, I really don't belong in, in that part. I know when I went to get a job as a, at the dealership, I, I didn't belong there. I was a tire buster at Sears. I didn't belong at the dealer. Those were like elite technicians. I didn't belong there. But having that pathway and sort of work through the campus was what, what helped to get me there. And I think that that's one of the things that, that, you know, we need to look at, how do we do this? And I talked about this with all the businesses today. I said, that partnership and that, and having the, the work experience or the internships. That's the best way to bridge the gap for students because it, it, it's, it lowers the barrier of you're done with a program, now go get a job. Because the campus itself and the program is helping that person to get into that, into that workplace. And it lowers the barrier of that, sort of that fear and anxiety of getting there. And, and that's why, you know, more apprenticeships and more, more opportunities for internships and co-op and things like that built into the pathway, I, I think is the most critical way that we can move students through. I, I think it's the, one of the best ways for us to do it.
Great. Thank you. I really appreciate that answer. And that's right on from a lot of the stuff I've been seeing and hearing out there. But glad to hear it articulated from our, our institution. The second question I have was, is related to, again, related to postings. And I know in one of the agencies I sit on a board for, we made our executive director go back and assess the job qualifications for many of these things. Because sometimes we just weren't getting the candidates. And they reassessed and re-scoped to try to really understand where maybe it wasn't BA that was absolutely necessary or BS that was necessary, but instead very specialized certificate type of approaches. So where, where, I mean, where are we? And, and Chancellor, I think you probably done, you know, we've talked about this with National Science Foundation, with sub-back laureates. Where, where do we stand in it? And is this the kind of conversation that maybe we should engage with the Chamber of Commerce? And other kind of big, big, broad business entities to say that like, if you don't have your vacancies filled and you continue to have them posted, can we reassess and figure out part of the qualification piece? It'd be a very streamlined certification or two-year degree that can get to the kind of person you need on, on the job. I know this sounds, sounds opposite of like some of our BA, our bachelor stuff, the BA, but bachelor's efforts that we're doing in some of these career technical areas. But the reality is, is there may be a whole bunch of positions that just need, you know, some upscaling and some, and some refinement of the work. And may not necessarily need, you know, a master's degree in chemistry, but need somebody who like in our, in our, in our biotech areas. You know, people who really understand how to manage a lamp, a lab, for example. And so just sort of as we're getting to the point now, it does feel like it, it would be a great effort for us to reach out to our business, you know, partners.
Yeah.
And to talk about, like, let's have this big, broad conversation about fine-tuning, upscaling our conversations and fine-tuning their actual needs.
And the chancellor challenged the CEOs in the room today on that very thing at the education summit. And I was at UC Riverside yesterday for, with the Department of Energy folks. And they are talking about, you know, unprecedented hundred billion dollars in money for the first time. And I, I challenged them, I said, but everything that you have is for post-doc PhDs, master's degree students. I said, I said, when are you going to talk to us? And, and he said, now. And I said, yeah, now. And so, you know, we, we said, we need to have this conversation because this is your pipeline to those, those jobs. You have, you're going to need to come through the community colleges to get that, that, those students for that. And so, you know, we, we're, we are beginning to challenge. The chancellor challenged today, I challenged the DO yesterday, and I think that that's, that's right on. We need to have those conversations because it's, it's really about the competencies and the skills. Is it necessarily that you do have to have the piece of paper? Or is it the competencies that you're looking for? I agree. I don't know if there's anything else.
Thank you. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes, thank you so much. This was really informative. And, you know, I, I just think, what I think of when I think of this, you know, the cost of living and is obviously rising in LA and so is inequality. And I think in many neighborhoods, like the only way our students and their families will not be displaced down the road is if we can figure out how to get them ready for the future of work so they can make a living to support their families. And so I, I loved your graph with the top industries and the top growing industries. And I, I guess this is more of a request because I don't want to take up too much time. I know we have a long day today. But um, I'd love to know like the process for identifying the top industries. And then how we connect them to actual employers in the region and then like matching our curriculum and our programs to those needs. And I, I fully understand that is a lot easier said than done. And I know our president of the academic senate is not here right now. But the complaints that I hear from employers is that many times educational institutions are too slow or too rigid in our ability to really like quickly tailor curriculum and programs to meet the ever-evolving needs of employers and the, and the future of work. And so that's why they're creating their own programs, right? You look at Amazon, they have those ads up. It's like, do this six-week program. You get our certificate and we give you the UX, you know, computing job. And so I think that's what we're up against in terms of getting students into our system. And so I'd love to hear kind of just the work that you're planning to be doing or just like what this district can do to be a little bit more flexible. So that we can really, you know, continue to work with the Riot Games. I love that idea that, I love that there's a partnership with Riot Games. The other employers in this, in this region that have the jobs, but they're frustrated because the, the curriculum is getting, you know, it's just taking.
Maybe that could be an IESS presentation. I don't know. I don't know if I can answer all that right here.
I don't want to touch that now because I know that we, we need to move on. But I just wanted to put that out there. I'd love to connect with you about that. And yeah.
That's a good question.
So thank you. I, I can sit here all day and listen to this presentation, but I know we have to move on because we're in the middle of a board meeting. But I did meet a woman and I do want to give you her card. And she's with the Institute for Local Government. Have you heard of that? She's the CEO and the, you know, executive director. Anyway, she was saying exactly what trustee Veras was saying. She works directly with local government to try to fill jobs because local government right now is, and you heard from Jeff Frang earlier. Really, a lot of those jobs are going unfilled and they have a huge need. Is there a way we can partner and do an apprenticeship program? I don't know if we're doing an apprenticeship program with the assessor's office, but that would be one way to really get our students in and give them a, a head start. And hopefully, once they go through our program, our educational programs, be hired in those. And hopefully, once they go through our program, our educational programs, be hired in those jobs. When I started my job at Glendale College in 1997, I was running a welfare to work AmeriCorps program. And when I would meet with students and ask them like, what is your goal? What do you, what do you want to do? They all answered me, I want a county job. They all wanted county jobs. So I really feel like we have a population of students who would probably love to go into local government, whether, you know, we're all elected up here, but there are so many other kinds of jobs and positions other than being an elected official. And if we could create a pipeline, I think we could really do something great for not only local government, but for our students.
I'll reach out.
Okay. Yeah. You could let her know I referred you. Thanks. I never know what to do with those cards. Now I'm just going to give everything to you, but thank you. I, that was a great presentation.
Thank you very much for the presentation.
I'm sorry. I just have one more question. Okay. Um, so I'm in the ABA accredited, uh, program for paralegals. And after I finished my program, like, how can I find like your program, like, if not at my campus? Cause I know they're like, each campus like has that department names are somewhat different. So like, how could one go about going to see if I can get help on getting a job? Like, how would I do that?
Uh, so at your campus, yeah, so you probably could, the, the dean of CTE would be the most likely person. Uh, who's Dr. Rivera. And so, because he, he has the staff that does a lot of the job placement, the coordination, all that kind of stuff. So that'd be the best place to reach out on your campus would be the, the dean of career technology education.
So for most of our campuses, they should refer to that, their dean.
Unless, unless of the job placement centers, some of the campuses may have an actual job placement center. Um, and so that might, that would be the better, I mean, you could also go to the, the career center as well potentially, but not all career centers have a job placement component of it. So it all depends on sort of each campus might be unique. But you could, you can certainly start with a career center. They might be nowhere to send you. There may be a job placement center on your campus. And of course, the dean of CTE on every campus should know everything.
Awesome. Thank you.
I think, uh, Dr. Lancaster answered it fully, but we call it a little bit different on each site, but it could be a work source center.
Yeah.
America's Job Center, uh, or in their county, city or nonprofit run. But these are folks who, these are, they're professionals who we lend space to, to, to get you prepared for the workforce. So they know what the jobs are. They prepare with, they can prepare with paperwork, you know, letter, resume, CV, all, all the sort of packets. You can be employable and be competitive. So are each of our colleges, we've made space for that. Uh, so that's, uh, you, you should start that before your training finishes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chancellor Lancaster. And now, and thank you for all of the presentations, um, for the committee of the whole. Um, we are now adjourning the committee of the whole and I pass the gavel back to President Vella. The Reagan bean, the regular meeting.
Thank you so much. And, um, Chancellor, I know your report is next, but we have had students here waiting for the last two and a half hours. If we could move, uh, with your, um, you know, um, blessing, uh, move up, uh, request to address the board trustees regarding matters not on the agenda, HH1. Um, let's go ahead and start with, um, Dominique Merritt and then Brianna Vargas. Come on up.
Thank you guys for being so patient.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Vice Chancellor and the Board of Trustees. All right. My name is Dominic Merritt. I'm a current student at LATTC. My major is electrical engineering. And today I'd like to address the lack of affordable housing and the lack of affordable food and options for our community college students. I'm a student who struggles with the ability to afford college and financial resources to afford healthy food options. Because of this, fast food has become an option for, that fits my budget. And unfortunately I have developed unhealthy eating habits that decline my physical health. I'm a hardworking student who has taken two jobs to help support myself in my academic journey. However, I find it hard to maintain my own apartment because rent is so high. I struggle with the payments of rent and just by myself, I even consider pausing my education. But I spoke to a counselor and he advised me to keep going and to seek like-minded students as roommates to help lighten the load. There is currently a need for support students like myself and who live below the means of housing and food insecurities. I ask you all to support students like myself, living in poverty, trying to better our situation through higher education. And I thank you for listening.
Thank you so much.
Next, Brianna Vargas Rubio.
Hello, everyone.
Oh.
Um, my name is Brianna Vargas. Um, I am a student at East Los Angeles Community College. Um, I'm currently ma- majoring in political science. I'm also an intern of AFT 1521. And this is one of many issues we are, you know, I'm sorry, I have to run. I'm just sorry, give me one second.
Take your time.
Sorry about that. Alrighty. Uh, so I'm an intern for AFT 1521. Um, I want to address the lack of affordable housing for community college students and its impact on my academic journey. So part of the LA CCD's mission statement states, "The mission of the Los Angeles Community College District is to foster student success for all individuals seeking advancement by providing equitable and supportive learning environments at nine of our colleges." Affordable student housing is part of providing equitable and supportive learning environments. Our community college students are experiencing various hardships while trying to achieve higher education. As a district, we have a responsibility to set the standard high when defining what it means to be equitable and supportive for our students. So since 2016, I've had over 11 different addresses. I've dealt with being kicked out, sleeping in my car and like most students, having to live paycheck to paycheck. Today, I think my stable living conditions to my friend's mother, who luckily had an extra room to rent me and, and is willing to house me so long as I stay in school. It is unbearable to know that many students, even many in this room today, don't have the same fortune of having things work out for them that way. There is no friend's mother, extra room, only the daunting choice between enduring homelessness while pursuing their higher education or working full-time, stuck in the same cycle our past generations have been a part of. What I ask the Board of Trustees today is to break the cycle that is burdening, burdening community college students by implementing affordable housing for all nine campuses. Students across California are in need of stable housing conditions and the time is now to make education a priority. We must close the equity gaps and it begins with community colleges. Thank you.
Do we have any more of the students that are here that like to address the board? Please come up.
Hello, Board of, hello, Board of Trustees. And, okay, make sure. All right. So my name is Islam Al Kimura. I go to LATCC. Um, before I started there, um, I actually ran housing for homeless individuals or leased places and rent housing. The problem was a lack of support from the city. Um, a lot of the people that they dropped off were on drugs, had mental problems. And eventually I stopped doing it because it got to be too much. So I'm here to tell you that, uh, there is an option. Many of the Korean landlords with new constructions, they, um, built these hoping to house homeless, but it got to be too much because it was a different problem that the city didn't understand. It was a dread being, um, they didn't understand what they were addressing. They thought they were addressing homeless, but they were addressing, trying to, it was a lot, it was a bigger problem than just homelessness and they didn't understand any of that. Um, but with that being said, a lot of the properties are left vacant and they're specifically available for that. Um, I'm seeing a lot of plans for construction about from my experience in working real estate. Well, probably will never happen because it's too, almost grand dose. It's too big. Um, but there's already places in the area. One building that I know, um, near, um, USC has about, I think 18 rooms with 18 bathrooms. It's a new construction. There's no reason why, um, with the funds from the city that, um, or the, uh, district, the students can't be housed there. Right now I have one available with a property owner I know right next to LACC. All right. This one, I think it's 11 rooms with 11 bathrooms. We're already setting it up as a shared space and we're going to extend it to students. I brought it up at one of the board meetings at the school or one of the housing meetings at the school and I was ignored basically. No one asked to see me after, asked what we're doing. It was, we were ignored. So, um, I got the owner to trust me enough for me to be able to approach the students myself, which is what we plan to do. But what I would like, but what would we like towards a successful program and it's private right now, um, from support for the students so they could have affordable housing from the district and the schools. It's right there. It's ready. We're actually ready to go right now. We're setting it up now. And that's basically it. Um, um, right now, like I said, I'm, I have no support from the school, no support from the district. We're just doing it ourselves. And I got the owner to trust me enough to say that the students would pay.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Um, okay. Thank you. Um, next is gonna be Thursday Storm. Thursday, are you, are you here or are you online? Thursday on board policies? Lupin, do you know if she's online or she's? Okay. She left. Okay. Next is Rosa G. Amescua. Almauricia. Ah, Almaurica. Please come on up.
I came to present a petition because we are going through some problems in the elevators of East Los Angeles College. I mean, we've been, I mean, we started the semester and for two weeks only, we had the elevators for students with special needs and the instructors that are on wheelchairs. I mean, they got locked up. Student instructor and, uh, to the students, we were not able to go into those elevators at all. Even, and we needed to get out in a certain level to go a certain way, yet. It was a big problem that we were going down the stairs all the time. And sometimes, I mean, to some of us, it was hard. And it's been hard because we're trying our best to study. I mean, it's been hard for me in many ways, but now this, you know, I think this is something that we need to help the students to continue, especially the students with special needs. And, you know, that we want to achieve what we, we're, we want to do. This is something very hard, but I hope you guys, um, approve something positive because we need those elevators to be fixed and to put at least an alarm in sight. You know, like that in case of an emergency, they lock up or something, you know, a problem. There's an alarm because once, I mean, sometimes when we're in there and the phones don't work, everything gets blocked up. I mean, but I hope you take this into consideration because this is something very important. Not only for me, but for all the students in East Los Angeles College. Thank you very much. God bless you. Have a great day.
I do want to state for the record, uh, to staff is that, that was, um, building E3. All right. That's okay. Uh, next is Obit Silva. Obed or Obet? Um, Ms. Burke, if we could accommodate, please, Mr. Silva with the, um, a speaker, I mean, a microphone.
We have a big problem at East Los Angeles College. These elevators that the student was just talking about have not been functioning since the building opened. That's eight years, eight years of these elevators breaking down. Eight years of East Los Angeles College and the district not doing anything. So I find it ironic that you guys are coming to accommodate me now with this microphone. And I gotta smile. I gotta laugh at the absurdity of it all. Students have been stuck there. The fire department has had to come out and open them with the jaws of life various times. Students have panic attacks in there. I've been stuck there twice personally. Right now, I, I should be on campus teaching a class. But instead I'm here with my back aching after waiting so many hours to speak. I have a stack of email correspondence that go back to 2017 complaints about these elevators to President Martinez, when he was the president, President Roman, to Maisha Armstrong, when she was there, to the director of facilities, the prior one, the present one, all correspondences here. Promises empty. Telling me to go around the building and use the other, other elevators. Treating me like a second-class citizen, treating my students with disabilities like second-class citizens. I've been promised by President Roman and Michael Pascual approximately two years ago that these elevators will be replaced because they are defective. They're cheap elevators. Most of everything in that building is cheap. Probably even the sign of Mr. Moreno. You find that funny, huh? Ms. Lino, I do too. Because money is spent on things that we do not need. That which we do need is ignored. And Chancellor Panchito Rodriguez, I've spoken to you personally and told you about these elevators. I don't know what you've done, but these elevators are still broken. Broken promises, broken hearts. What do we stand for as a district? Diversity, equality, inclusion and accessibility. Right now there's five elevators in that building. Only one is functioning. One. You should be embarrassed. Where's your pride? As people who represent students as these, where's your fight? Do the right thing. Replace these elevators.
Silva. Next is Ashley Tejada with the College Campaign. Ashley. Is she online? Oh, go ahead and unmute yourself. Okay.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Ashley Tejada here on behalf of the Campaign for College Opportunity. Thank you Chancellor Rodriguez, the entirety of the board and all nine college presidents for your extensive efforts in supporting students in receiving an ADT and for your commitment to intentional intersegmental coordination as we implement transformative transfer policy. LACC D has taken incredible strides to adopt the ADT as the preferred pathway for all students seeking to transfer. And we thank you for making this a priority as we near the 2024 implementation deadlines. This year, the Campaign for College Opportunity identified 27 California colleges and California State University campuses, leading California and transfer student success. These campuses will be recognized at the Champions of Higher Education for Excellence and Transfer Award Ceremony on November 14th. With that, we invite you all to join us in celebrating your very own East Los Angeles College for their exemplary work to implement the ADT and being amongst the highest number of ADTs awarded across all 116 community colleges. A major congratulations to President Roman and his entire team. We are proud to call you an ally in this work and this award reflects an intentional data-driven strategy. We are proud to call you an ally in this work and this award reflects an intentional data-driven strategy that centers student success. We also extend a major thank you and congratulations to the faculty, staff, and campus leaders doing the intentional work to make this award a reality. Thank you all. As we continue to recover from the pandemic, we acknowledge the tremendous work that is happening to increase student retention and success at all nine LACC D campuses. Your efforts are seen and truly valued. We know every single college in this district is leading the important work to support students. And we look forward to celebrating more colleges in the years to come. You can find a full listing of where all campuses rank on our website in the upcoming days. As the largest district in the state, your dedication to ADT progress is pivotal. And we look forward to continuing these important efforts with you all, thank you.
Thank you so much, um, next is Thursday Storm.
President Vela, just really quickly, can we request to have a report from facilities and FEMPAC regarding the elevator, obviously with your concurrence, trustee Vela, at the next FEMPAC?
Yes, um, let's go ahead and make that request formally, um, thank you so much. Okay, next is Thursday Storm. Thursday, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, um, let me learn how to handle this. Good afternoon, I'm sorry for the early delay, the name is Thursday Storm. I'm a student attending East Los Angeles College, majoring in philosophy. My own philosophy is to rethink our way of thinking as a way to enrich in one's own life. I'm an ambassador at Latino Equality Alliance and from there, we've been working on a campaign called Mind Over Matter. Some info is that the Mind Over Matter Campaign is a skills-building and substance use awareness program for high school and college-aged youth in southeast Los Angeles. Our campaign aims to end the harsh punitive measures on drug abuse for students within Montebello and Los Angeles College School Districts by eliminating zero-tolling policies for drug violations. And we've been using our advocacy and public education to reshape the ideologies surrounding drug use from a criminal problem to a more of a mental health concern. And I am here to speak in regards of, to the standards of student college policy, board policy fifty-five hundred. And, and which states that any use of controlled substances or possession of alcoholic beverages while in any property owned or used by the district while participating in any district or college-sponsored function or field trip will be followed by disciplinary action. The procedures shall clearly define the conduct that is subject to discipline and shall identify potential disciplinary actions, including but not limited to the removal, suspension, or expulsion of a student. And some of, and some of the statistics I wanted to provide come from the study results originating from the National Center for Drug Abuse statistic, which states that nine point five million for three point eight of adults over the age of eighteen have both a substance abuse disorder and a mental illness. As a substance use disorder affect over twenty million Americans aged twelve and over. Thirty-five percent of college students indicate they use illegal drugs inside of prescription drugs. Drugs abuse often result in comorbidity. Nearly fifty percent of persons who have substance abuse disorder also experience mental illness. The criminalizing substance use among students is crucial. Instead of punishing students, we should be investing a bit more in providing resources and tools to support their mental health and educational journeys. Yes, drugs are harmful, but so are the unique stressors that LGBTQ, you have a color face that lead to substance uses, to which I strongly believe this is a topic that need to be further addressed on the cause of substance use versus criminalizing, criminalizing and punishing those that use drugs. And a solution to which the Mind Over Matter Campaign has considered is for the creation of a better system for students struggling with substance use to be able to be connected to mental health resources, reduce the number of explosions, and prevent criminalization by amending the LACC D board policy fifty-five hundred to include non-disciplinary action for possession of controlled substances and incorporate this as a mental health concern. And thank you, that is all of what I have to say for now.
Thank you very much. Okay, any more public comment? Not on the agenda. Lupin? Everything good, okay, great. All right, so now we go back into the agenda. Um, and thank you, everyone, for your patience and thank you, everyone, for being here.
President Vela, can I just make one comment? Um, can we, what's the timeline? I know you requested trustee Hernandez to have the elevators agendized at FEMPAC, but what's the timeline for getting back to the board? I mean, anybody who knows me knows, like, I am terrified of elevators. And I've been stuck in elevators within LACC D on some of our campuses and in this building. And so I emphasize the students and we need to make sure we have working elevators because some people absolutely don't have the choice and they can't take the stairs or the ramps. So can we, can you let us know, like, what's an expected timeline to get back to us about? This is the first I've heard about the elevators at East, and so I'm a little bit concerned.
The item wasn't agendized, so I won't say too much, but can have a public discussion, but in terms of this specific question, I'll get with, uh, Dr. Roman and Dr. Smith. And within the ten days, we'll put a couple paragraphs to the board, give it a status, uh, and I will move forward.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, trustee Hoffman. Um, I do want to, uh, recognize that we have our former student trustee Calan here in the back. Thank you for visiting us. Okay, all right. Um, so next, we're gonna go ahead and go into the chancellor's report. Um, and chancellor, take it away.
Okay, thank you all, I know the board has been listening to multiple reports today, so I'll make this necessarily shorter. And as soon, as we look into, uh, November, I wanted to point out that the, uh, the monthly chancellor's report is available. It's a, it will send to everyone in the district and to, as well as our colleagues who support our, our districts. So on a monthly basis, it is posted and I want to commend, uh, the colleges and our district office for putting together a pretty timely and substantive report. So if you ever ask yourself what's going on at the district, what do we care about, how are we investing the public's resources and their trust? A one source for the answering of that question is to look at the chancellor's monthly report. So I will commend that, uh, to, to your reading. Uh, here's what I'll just cover today, these, uh, five quick areas there. So moving on, uh, to the state of the district report, just to sort of, uh, one additional announcement related to that. Last month, this was distributed and presented to the board. But on this, uh, state of the district, that report, I mean, there is a link there, again, it's, uh, it's posted. And we cover a variety of areas in terms of building for the future, restoring enrollments, reviewing our outcomes, uh, and then expanding our reach with robust advocacy and strengthening community partnerships. So just another, a quick reminder, this is a report that we commend to your reading and support. It's a short report, it's about twenty or so pages. And again, uh, it shows where we're placing our investments and it gives a broad overview of the, of the, uh, of the district and where we're heading. So again, commend this to your reading that we do do this on an annual basis, public document. Please feel the share with those who might, uh, be interested. Moving on to the next area, and this has been mentioned several times, uh, today already, but I wanted to thank once again, uh, all the members of the board, uh, who were at this activity and the leadership that was bestowed upon, uh, Dr. Smith and his team, uh, and Build LACC D to ensure that it was a fruitful, robust, uh, presentation. I also want to thank the, uh, the AFT interns who provided, I think, tremendous, uh, presentation and testimony as to why housing is needed. So thank you for our AFT interns. And really, uh, providing vivid detail, our why, as was demonstrated by some of our speakers, uh, today as well. But I wanted to point out perhaps something that is to underscore, and that is, there is a, there is a, a process that's going on now um, that, uh, that we mentioned at this, not just receiving input from the community, uh, but the district now is receiving and is requesting qualifications, information that will inform a request for proposals later this academic year. A request for proposals for the construction of student and/or workforce housing. So this helps to inform the larger process that is going on. So I simply didn't want to have folks think that this was a one-off, nice community meeting, it was. But it helps to inform the other formal processes that are going on, uh, within the district that will ultimately be brought, uh, to this board. So I wanted to make sure that we connected those dots together. Next area here that I'd like to, uh, touch base on, uh, and this was brought up in Dr. Gribbin's, uh, presentation, it's fabulous event. And I wanted to, uh, thankfully, uh, the ban has been lifted, our students have traveled, uh, to the HBCUs now. They're, they're actually visiting, uh, these schools on caravans, that's, that's good news, that's good news. Uh, we have a tremendous relationships, partners, partnerships with, uh, the HBCUs, uh, with our LACC D, uh, nine, if you will. So I wanted to commend, uh, Dr. Gribbin's for hosting us, Dr. Coney, uh, Dr. Regina Smith, and all the AOI Umoja coordinators and faculty members, uh, who made this just a tremendous, uh, event that provided opportunities for our students and for the many, many high school students that were bussed in. So again, uh, this is an annual event that we combined, uh, with our annual Welcome Black event to provide a welcoming environment, uh, for our black students. So congratulations to all, uh, and it was a tremendous event and happy to be there. Moving on to this, uh, the next couple of things, uh, you heard, uh, so, uh, so well put together in the workforce presentation earlier today and then in the discussion earlier. Uh, the LACC D now has four baccalaureate degrees. That's more than any other community college district in the state of California, four. And I wanted to make sure that, uh, the, the, the two degrees now at the West LA College, Dental Hygiene and Avionics, uh, the new degree at LA Valley College of Respiratory Therapy, and this degree here, uh, in Bio-Manufacturing, LA Mission College. So congratulations, that curriculum, I understand, Dr. Ellis has written, we're ready to go, uh, to begin to offer that. And we are now in the planning, uh, stages, uh, if you will, uh, to expand the facility, our facilities over at LA Mission College, so we could begin, uh, that program in earnest utilizing some of the tremendous state support that we received with the construction of said facility. But I also wanted to point out that LA Pierce College, uh, we just heard is on the provisional approval list for also a bio-manufacturing. So it could be that it's shorter, we'll have five baccalaureate science degrees in workforce. And I think that is a tremendous testament to our eligibility to be able to respond to workforce needs in a better way. To your point earlier, uh, trustee Hoffman, and to provide individuals with the opportunity to be upskilled, re-skilled. Many students come back in those further baccalaureate degrees, uh, so that they can, uh, maintain and improve, uh, their trajectory in their particular profession. Uh, those programs are more diverse, uh, those programs are diversifying those professional fields. And imagine this, to get a full baccalaureate degree at LACC D for a cost of four years of eleven thousand dollars. I mean, that is just something we should be very, very proud of. Again, kudos to our faculty, uh, to facilities persons who are pursue, who are pursuing us, uh, the opportunity to, to have these excellent, uh, exceptional degrees that are, uh, needed and that respond to the needs of our regional employers. The last slide I have here in, and, uh, this was mentioned earlier, and we're very proud, uh, and a couple of important points here. One is that West LA College, uh, is the only community college that has the associate's degree in climate studies, the only two-year program. And that is, uh, I think, a tremendous, uh, and it's intersegmental. It is, it's, uh, it's interdisciplinary, intersegmental. Uh, and having been, uh, uh, and at the event that was, uh, shared by Dr. Limbaugh yesterday, the fiftieth anniversary of the foundation, is the real esprit de corps that is there, uh, people coming together for the benefit of students. And I think, uh, the manifestation of this climate studies, a degree, uh, is, is testament to that. I also wanted to point out that, uh, because of that tremendous support, uh, now, with support that we see from the federal government, from the state government, that, uh, West LA College is host to the California Center for Climate Education. The only one of its kind of a two-year school in the nation. So again, we're gonna lead this area, lead the space, kudos to the leadership, the faculty, the students over at West LA College, the tremendous work that they're doing, uh, in this particular, uh, space. Our four-year partners in the area are very interested in talking to us. I was speaking to Chancellor Juan Munoz today from UC Riverside. They've also received, uh, resources to build an institute for climate studies education. So you could see, uh, the connections that we can build on to make sure that our students have appropriate transfer, uh, pathways. So again, I wanted to, to, to mention just those couple of real important facts, uh, related to how our district is expanding. Uh, it's, uh, and, and it's really important that our, our nine colleges, our district be responsive, nimble, be opportunistic, be entrepreneurial, and, and zealous in our responsibility to serve, uh, this particular community. The public gives us its money, its trust, and its resources, the steward for the betterment of students and families to, again, move them out of intergenerational poverty and move them to, towards a pathway of prosperity. I'm very proud that we were able to do that, uh, together with our core of faculty, staff, professionals, our administrators, and of course, our students and our community partners that come from government, that come from philanthropy, from our nonprofit sectors and foundations that are lifting us, that are giving us the extra resources that we need to prove, that is able, that has enabled us to move from, uh, a good education that we can provide to an exemplary one that we see our students benefiting from. So very, very proud. I'll end with this, uh, earlier last month, we were very pleased that we were able to, uh, recognize some of our own uh, for, for his work with the, uh, Brown Black Education and Leadership, Dr. Manuel Gabru, that was recognized in San Diego last month, yes. Because of his leadership in a DIA front, uh, Dr. Anthony Kulppe was recognized by the LA Times last month. And because, yes, and because of his selection to the very prestigious Aspen, uh, Fellows Program, a Dr. Jim Limbaugh, a national program, was a recognized official selection there. So we like to do that and we got some word out on that, uh, but we just heard, and, uh, we haven't not made it too public yet, uh, that the state chancellor's office, uh, presented an award in his awarding, uh, Dr. Ruben Smith, uh, with his, for his leadership on climate studies, on sustainability, and he'll be recognized, uh, this month at the Board of Governors meeting. So I will be happy to stand with him on our behalf, uh, to, to receive that award, uh, and Dr. Smith, well deserved. Thank you for your leadership in this particular space. Again, uh, leading is not simple, uh, you get criticized sometimes with this kind of work. But if we keep our eye on the North Star, which is student success, the success of our students, um, I think that, that this will all work out, uh, just beautifully. So thank you all for being able to do that. So that ends my report, thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, chancellor, really appreciate your report. All right, so now we're back on track, I think, unless we have any more, um, uh, you know, things that we need to do. So, um, we're reconvening, uh, under the, um, yeah, we did the reconvening, the vote, and after, uh, committee of the whole. Now we're gonna go to item L, which is foundation agreements. And so let's have a motion and a second to adopt foundation agreements, L one through L eleven.
So moved, second.
Moved, all right, moved by Eno, seconded by Hoffman. Any discussion? Oh, Hernandez, sorry, any discussion? I, I do want to say that I went last night to the West LA College Foundation Dinner with trustee Hoffman and Hernandez and my students. Um, and I was just really, really happy to see, um, you know, the foundation, you know, in, in its element. And, and I, you know, want to approve this with really the, uh, spirit of supporting all the foundations. Um, I know you guys at each college have your foundation, I know it's not always easy. I heard yesterday that the West LA College Foundation has one staff member, right? For like five jobs, but that's the spirit and, and we really do need to support them because, you know what? That's why, um, because basic needs. Because a big part of what the foundations do is they, as I learned last night, they raise the money and then they redistribute it to our students with issues like basic needs that we really need to support our, our students. As you saw today, you know, with some of what they said was very, very touching, uh, on their, you know, situations at home and so on and so forth. So again, uh, any other discussion? Hearing on, we have a, a motion at second, let's do roll call.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Not present. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vela?
Yes.
Trustee Veris? Not present.
Okay, did it pass? We have four, all right. Okay, next is gonna be our combined consent calendar. These are matters requiring only a majority vote. Uh, before we take action on a combined consent calendar, trustee Henderson, uh, will make a statement, uh, I don't know if she's here today. I don't know if she's not. All right. Oh, okay, chancellor, go ahead.
Yes, so thank you, so consider the matters, uh, in front of you. Uh, trustee Henderson will recuse herself from item oh five, oh five, to avoid any, uh, potential perceived conflict of interest. She liked to, uh, from the vote on oh five.
Okay, great. Um. Um, all right, let's go ahead and, uh, we now have a review for the combined consent calendar items N one through Z nine. These items include consent calendars for human resources, personnel commission, academic affairs, and student services, budget and finance, and facilities. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt combined consent calendar?
Moved.
N one through Z nine, so moved by Eno?
All second.
Okay, trustee Hoffman, thank you so much for seconding it. Any further discussion on or any items that we need to pull for the rest of the agenda? The consent calendar? Okay, hearing on, let's go ahead and do roll call.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Henderson, not present. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras? Not present.
Okay. Motion passes. All right. Next is, uh, business items A A one through A A thirteen. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt?
So moved.
All right. Move by Eno.
Second.
Second. Thank you so much, uh, trustee Cordova. All right. Any discussion on or any business items that board members would like to discuss separately?
Are all, all of these are approvable with a simple majority or like with, or do we?
Yeah, this is a simple majority.
Okay, because there's only four of us right here. Okay, great.
Yeah, these are definitely not super majority items. Yeah.
Well.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing on, let's do roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson? Not present. Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Okay. Next is B B, facility items, B B one through.
No, trustee Henderson's here if you want to record her vote.
Oh, no, it's okay. We already, we got the votes. Well, she, she was going to recuse herself, but she wasn't here. So we're, we're actually better, better positioned. Yeah. Okay. B B facility items, B B one through B B twenty-three. May I have a motion and a second to adopt?
So moved.
All right. Move by Eno. I'll second. Any, uh, items, any separate discussion on facility items, B B one through B B twenty-three? All right, hearing on, roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Okay. Next is human resource item, C C one, employment action for Dr. Chancellor, uh, Francisco Rodriguez. Corrected contract. Board members, the next item is a correct contract for employment action for Chancellor Francisco Rodriguez. Before we proceed to the vote, I'll read the following language for the record. Pursuant to Government Code, Section five four nine five, five three C three, which is a part of the Brown Act, we're required to make an oral summary of proposed action and salary, salary schedules, compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits, all executive level positions as defined subdivision Government Code, three, five, one, one. In our case, we need to provide such summary for positions such as chancellor, the vice chancellor, and the college presidents. The agenda item now before us includes the employment action for Dr. Francisco Rodriguez to serve as chancellor of the L A Community College District from October one to June thirty, twenty twenty-seven with the salary of thirty-seven, three, eight, one, point four zero monthly. Effective this fiscal year, that begins on July one, twenty twenty-four. Upon the chancellor's completion, each subsequent fiscal year of service, the district will provide the chancellor a lump sum payment in the amount of equal to state-funded cost of living, COLA, to the base salary. Or, uh, sorry, provided by the district, the other unrepresented district administrators in the completed fiscal year. All right. Let me catch my breath. If the board authorizes any to base salary schedules for other district administrators at a rate less than state-funded COLA, the chancellor's lump sum payment will be calculated based on the lower rate authorized by the board. The, the chancellor may elect to defer any earned lump sum payment into any district provided deferred compensation account that is available to under, unrepresented district administrators. Chancellor Rodriguez will be, uh, entitled to the same health and welfare benefits available to other district employees under the district's joint labor management benefits. Master agreement included, but not limited to the same retiree healthy health insurance benefits at the same holiday vacation illness, lethal expenses available to other underrepresented district administrators and will receive five hundred dollars per month transportation allowance consistent with other executives and college presidents of L A C C D. May I have a motion and a second on C C one?
So moved.
Move by Eno?
Second.
Second by Henderson? All right. Any discussion? By board members? Okay, hearing on, roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passes. All right. D D one. Uh, congratulations, Chancellor. Okay. D D one, I'm trying to get us out in a decent time. Uh, D D one. Resolution authorized issuance of election twenty sixteen, general obligation bond, series D, and actions repeated thereto. Next, we'll move to the recommendations from the chancellor. Chancellor, please provide a brief explanation, explanation on the next two action items.
Yes, uh, both D D one and D D two, uh, relate to bond sales, uh, both for measure C C and for ma- measure J. Uh, what is before you, uh, is, uh, our interest in selling bonds, four hundred million under measure C C and under measure J, a hundred and seventy-five million. We go to sale, we use those monies to provide us the cash that allows us to complete our facilities. I, I need to note, uh, that an attachment was inadvertently omitted on D D one and D D two. Uh, this agenda will be amended tomorrow so that the public can see it. Uh, this item itself is available. The board members have it in front of them as a sheet, um, and it's available to the public, uh, in the lobby. Uh, so we won't, we'll make that amendment. We conferred with council. And it's appropriate, uh, to do it in this particular way. Uh, the sheet also not only spells out the, uh, how the dollars, uh, will, will be expended within the respective bonds, measure C C and measure J, uh, respectively, but also lays out, uh, the syndicate, as we call, that those who will be assisting us, many of whom are in this room, in the actual sale of the bonds at which percentages. Uh, this item was brought, uh, to the Budget and Finance Committee, due to discuss, uh, with Chair Hoffman and members of the committee. It passed out, uh, unanimously. So we now take it, uh, bring both of these items separately, uh, because they're different issuances, resolutions are required, uh, for the twenty sixteen, uh, bonds uh, at the rate of four hundred million, uh, and then the twenty oh eight, uh, election, measure J, at a hundred and seventy-five million. So we're asking for the board's support, uh, and take these items separately, D D one, uh, D D two, and please note that the sheet will be amended, uh, um, and, and, uh, added to, uh, this item for the public and the sheets are available to the board now and to the public in the lobby.
Um, Chancellor, may, or, um, may I just read something into the record just for, for the public to know? Um, for the district's twenty twenty-one debt policy goals and objectives, for each debt offering, the district will include in the underwriting syndicate to a minimum of thirty percent participation, small, local, emerging, disabled, and veteran-owned businesses.
Thank you so much. And in this particular case, it exceeds that.
Yep. Um, should I read the syndicates just so we know? Okay. All right. Um, we have senior managers, Bank of America and Loop Capital, co-senior manager Ramirez, Ramirez and Company, co-managers, Cabera Capital, Seibert Williams Schenk, and Backstrom MacCarley Berry. And this will be available. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Um, can I have a motion and a second for D D one?
So moved.
Move by, you know?
I'll second.
Seconded by Hoffman. Thank you, trustee Hoffman. Uh, any further further discussion? All right, hearing on, roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Yes.
Okay. So now we actually have to do the motion and the second on the actual resolution authorizing the issuance of the two thousand eight, right? This is the, the other election general obligation, uh, bond series M. So let's get a motion and a second for D D two.
I'll move to approve.
All right. Move Hoffman.
Okay.
Seconded by Henderson. Any just further discussion? Okay, hearing on, roll call, please.
Student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez?
Yes.
Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
Okay. Now, E E are matters requiring a super majority vote. So that would mean, uh, that we do have quorum for that. So this is E one, adopt emergency resolution for the Alder Building Water Infiltration Remediation Project at L A, uh, Pierce College and ratified construction contract issued on an emergency basis, uh, at a cost of eighty-six thousand, five twenty-four. AD may have a motion and a second on item D one. Moved by Henderson, seconded by Eno. Any discussion? Hearing on, roll call, please.
Student, student trustee Cordova's advisory vote?
Yes.
Trustee Henderson?
Yes.
Trustee Hernandez? Trustee Hoffman?
Yes.
Trustee Eno?
Yes.
Trustee Vella?
Yes.
Trustee Veras?
All right. Next is notice, reports, and informative. Uh, board members, these are notices or three notices and one informative. No action is required at this time. And, oh, yeah, Chancellor.
Is that the? Thank you, Mr. Vella. On item F F one, related to the twenty twenty-four calendar, there may be some changes. I'll review those with the board, uh, before we bring those back, but there, uh, I just wanted to note that, uh, there are likely to be some changes, uh, to the dates. We will maintain the cadence to the Wednesday schedule, uh, but because of holidays and a few other things, uh, there could be some differences in the actual dates, uh, themselves. And then the pacing or spreading between both the board meeting, uh, the regular meeting, like we have now, and then the committee. So there may be some change. This is the time, if you have any particular, uh, conflicts, this is the time to do that as well. So we will accept all those and return next month, uh, with an amended sheet. No action required today.
Should we just email you, Chancellor? Like if we see, if we see dates that we might want changed, should we just email? That's, okay.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, and then two with notification of estate travel, and then three with twenty three, twenty-four annual budget and financial report. Thank you all so much for your support on those. Um, next is G G, and those are announcement indications of future proposed actions by the Board of Trustees. So I'll start over here. The trustee Cordova.
I mentioned, uh, my future proposed action in the beginning, um, in regards to the partnership with the Department of Public Social Services. So that was all part of my future, as of now.
Thank you so much. Uh, next, trustee Hoffman?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee, get it on there?
I have a, yes, I have an overdue, um, API Advisory Committee meeting, so I will put that one in the books. Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, trustee Veras?
Nothing to announce.
Okay. Vice President Henderson?
Uh, yes, I, I would just like to address some of the concerns that, um, have been brought forward to the board over the last week regarding, um, chancellor's contract and folks' feelings about it, bargaining units and individuals. And I would just like to propose that, um, moving forward so that everyone feels that their voices are being heard as we make, um, contractual decisions with our, you know, with our one employee, that we consider, uh, three sixty evaluation so that we can include our, um, stakeholder group.
Okay. Thank you, uh, trustee Henderson. I think that, um, you know, the inclusion factor is very important of the district to be able to, um, you know, also work with our chancellor and uh, be able to, um, give their, uh, voice, uh, as to how our most important and wonderful, uh, chancellor uh, is performing, is, is, is handling, uh, every day-to-day task. So, and again, I want to congratulate you on today. Um, I know it's been a extremely, um, long meeting, but, uh, I do believe that, you know, uh, your contract was very important to the Board of Trustees and as you see, uh, this board, board members here, uh, unanimously supported your contract. And so we look forward to working with you. And, uh, I'm very confident that you will include, uh, our stakeholders a- as you move forward in, in your next, um, uh, your next four years. Yeah, absolutely. Your three years. All right. I think that's it. Finally, um, we did, same public comment. We already did it. Um, we'll go ahead and recess into closed session without any.
President Vella?
Oh.
There is one speaker for a closed session?
Oh, okay. See, we're, we're not off the hook yet, everyone. Um, okay. So this is with, uh, request to address the Board of Trustees regarding closed session agenda matters. Yona Lampley, please unmute yourself. She's on Zoom, right? Oh, okay. Come on up. Um, Lupe, is this also three minutes? Okay.
Hi, my name is Kiana Lampley. I'm a custodian at Trade Tech College. I appreciate the opportunity to address, um, you today regarding the recent matter that has led to your consideration of my suspension from work. I want to take this opportunity to provide my perspective on the situation and explain why I believe suspension is not the appropriate course of action. It has been very challenged, it has been a very challenging work environment that has been toxic and hostile here at Trade Tech. The innocent question, as you are pains to attendance, I, I understand the gravity of the situation. I do not take it lightly. However, I would like to highlight a few important points that I believe warrant consideration before reaching a decision on suspension. First, I've been a dedicated, um, committed member of Trade Tech for fourteen-plus years. Um, I love my job. I've had, I love opportunity that, um, Trade Tech provides numerous experiences. I've been enriched by Trade Tech.
I'm sorry, can we get her another mic?
Uh, is there any way we could fix? I, I'm so sorry. So sorry. And you can start over with the three minutes. So sorry about that. Okay, can we start again, Crystal? Okay.
Uh, hi, my name is Kiana Lampley. I'm a custodian at Trade Tech. Now, I appreciate the opportunity to address you today regarding the recent matter that led to the consideration of my suspension from work. I want to take this opportunity to provide my perspective on the situation and explain why I believe suspension is not the appropriate course of action. It has been a very challenging work environment that has also been toxic and hostile here at Trade Tech. The innocent question, as you are pains to, um, attendance. I understand the gravity of the situation and I do not take it lightly. However, I would like to highlight a few important points that I believe warrant consideration before reaching a decision on suspension. First, I have been a dedicated member of the school, Trade Tech, for over fourteen-plus years, fourteen-plus years. I love my job. I love opportunity and the numerous experiences Trade Tech has provided for me. Throughout my time here, I have made a positive impact on the community and the school. My track record, my track record reflects my committed commitment to serving and the well-being of being a Beaver. I would like to bring to your attention certain factors that may have influenced my actions without seeking to excuse them. With elimination, the B shift brought tremendous conflict for my life. This life change came with supervisors' falsity of documentation, false accusation, my pay being docked numerous times without my knowledge, and also a heavy increase in stress. While this does not justify my behavior, it provides a broader context to consider. To address the situation to ensure it doesn't happen again, I'm prepared to recommit to being the best Beaver and to support our staff and students in the highest capacity. I humbly request the opportunity to provide myself and make amends for my actions. I believe that a suspension may not be the most productive solution, and I'm committed to working closely with the company, my colleagues, to rebuild trust and to uphold the standards of the organization. Therefore, I'm asking the board, before you make the decision that could affect my career, take food from my child's mouth, and also that you, I also ask that you investigate the circumstances and complaints that surround my work environment at Trade Tech. In conclusion, I want to express my gratitude for your consideration and providing me the opportunity to address the board. I'm deeply committed to the com- the company, its mission and its values, and I hope that together we can move past this incident and continue to contribute to the company's success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Um, any other requests for closed session to speak? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Is it on closed session?
Yes, I'm just.
Okay.
Picking back in for her. Okay, my name is Kristin Ozian, representing S C A, like, S C U Local ninety-nine. Um, I just asked, uh, for the board, um, before you make a decision on this Lampley, uh, you know, you noticed for her attendance to take into consideration her work environment. Ms. Lampley has been working in a hostile and toxic work environment and has filed two grievances against, um, her senior custodial, uh, custodian supervisor. Ms. Lamp, Ms. Lampley mentioned her, uh, work environment and her grievances. Not only was Ms. Lampley subjected to a hostile and toxic work environment, uh, being a single mother, she was also impacted by the, uh, B shift elimination and has struggled with, um, providing childcare for her, um, child. Um, if she was working in an environment free from, um, bullying and harassment, if she was still on the, uh, late B shift she was hired for, um, you know, her attendance would not be as impacted. Ms. uh, Lampley has requested with the senior custodial supervisor and operation manager for several, on several occasions for, um, um, accommodations and, uh, scheduled changes, and they were, um, denied. On several occasions for, um, um, accommodations and, uh, scheduled changes, and they were, um, denied. And, you know, with everything that's been going on with her, you know, this is, this has impacted her, you know, mentally, which of course. Impacted her, um, attendance. And for the, um, um, the absences that she did take off, she did provide, um. Uh, doctor, uh, notes for, um, excuses. And lastly, I just want to add that, uh, Ms. Lambs, Ms. Lampley. Skelly hearing was held with the president at Harvard College and not the president at Trade Tech. This is not procedural. And, and this also should be taken into consideration. Ms. Lampley is a good worker, but due to the circumstances raised. I believe issuing a, a suspension for her attendance is unreasonable, unreasonable, and, um. Because she just really haven't had any support from the district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other speakers on closed session items? Okay, I think this probably no more for sure. Um, without any objection, we're going to recess into closed session. Thank you, everyone.
So ordered, thank you.